I guess we'll get started. This is a continuation of the hearing. The court is going to read this. We have a question, any questions online?
As the president stated, this is a continuation of a hearing that is now to be held at 6:00 PM with respect to 107 State Street. Number 29, 2021. Roll call for tonight's meeting, Councillor Khan. He's absent. Councillor Lane.
I'm here.
Councillor Carley, present. Councillor Shan.
Present.
Councillor Tontar.
Here.
You. Councillor Vogel, present. Councillor Wallace.
Present.
Councillor Z.
Here.
You. Councillor Conwell.
Present.
Councillor Devlin. And Councillor President, I have four Mr. President. Two absent, yes.
Okay, so what I want to do, again, we're continuing a public hearing. So we have a great deal of testimony that's come in already. We have letters also that came in both from concerned citizens and the property owners since we last met. However, if there are other new evidence that anyone wants to bring forward, please raise your hand if you're present. Each has two minutes. Otherwise, you know, I think you'll be ready to deliberate. So, yes, sir, go ahead. I mean, you have to do this stand as a piece of white paper on a plaque. Just to stand there and speak to the caller. I need your name and your address.
It will do. My name is Bronson Stadler. I live at 19 Walnut Street in Newburyport. I've been a Newburyport resident since 1980. I want to speak in support of the council's nuisance order. I don't think I can add too much of what others have said. It is a nuisance. It is a, it is a, um, a visual light in the heart of our city. There's no question about that. I think there's also no question that the larger corporation which owns that will do whatever it can in order to drag its heels on doing anything about this. Very much similar to my own experience in a house next door to me, which was owned by a very, which was foreclosed on and owned by a very large real estate company, which dragged it on for a long, long, long time and refused to take my calls until there were really some serious safety issues. The reason I'm here tonight is I have two friends who live very close to this mobile station. One on High Street and one on State Street. And I think their lives are impacted by it. And I also think their property values are impacted by it. And I hope the council will take an aggressive approach. It seems to me that there has been some turn towards the council to taking a bit more of an aggressive approach to some of the negligent and abandoned properties, both residential and commercial. And I hope that that will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber? Yes.
I have handcuffed 11 Triad Street. I'd echo what the prior speaker just said. And I also have friends that live in the neighborhood. They've had to live with this for too long. And I don't see any downside to the city in declaring a public nuisance and getting the company to move on. They put lipstick on the pig a bit, but that's not enough. It needs to have a process and get going. So please support the audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff Roloff. I turned it to Global with Adam Shearer, 44, Newburyport. So I'll try to be quick. We did submit a status report November 19th from Global, highlighting the work that's been done since our last meeting. At the last meeting, we apologized for the lack of maintenance over the previous extended time period. We highlighted some of the immediate steps that were taken when these concerns were brought to global's attention. And we committed to doing certain things between the last meeting and this meeting. And that work's been done. All the issues that are identified in the draft order that's before you tonight, that are statements or recitals in support of a public nuisance finding have actually been addressed. So if you were to look through each of those items, all of those issues have been addressed. I understand that the city has been in situations before, the landfill being one example, where the owner has been asked to do something, has said they would do it, and then they don't. And they string the city out. And the only way to deal with some of, some of those situations is to take a very aggressive stance and to use mechanisms like Chapter 139 and other state remedies to get action. Here, that's not necessary. When Global was contacted and these concerns were brought to its attention, they backed them. They backed it quickly. They backed it in good faith. They've committed to working with the city. And what I think is everyone's ultimate goal there, which is to have this property that's been used as an active gas station since 1928, to work with the city towards finding a path forward so it can be reused for residential purposes. It's not a straightforward path. Because as we talked about before, ExxonMobil will put a deep restriction on property that prohibits residential use. So we have heard loud and clear that the neighbors don't want a gas station here anymore. They want residential use. City officials want residential use. The best way to get there is not to issue a public nuisance order and aggravate the situation and bring conflict into our dialogue. It's to work together to accomplish that. Global is in the best position to work with Exxon to have the deed restriction lifted. So because of the time constraints, I'll defer to the letter that I submitted November 19th, which I hope you got a chance to read. We don't think a public nuisance order is a warranted mechanism or one that's going to be protected. We would prefer to work with you cooperatively. I've identified two paths forward that would allow you to continue to keep global feet to the fire as an alternative path forward. One is to continue this hearing out. One is to continue this hearing out so that you've got the leverage over Global and we can report back in February or whenever you want it. You want us to be back in front of the council. The other is to, you can either vote that there is no public nuisance or you could vote to simply terminate the process without prejudice. And if we're not acting in good faith in January, you re-act. Thank you.
Next is Thomas Morgan John.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Tom Colter John, 64 Federal Street. Call President of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. Council President and members of the City Council. The trust strongly urges the City Council to vote the gas station a public nuisance. While the minimal cleanup by Global is appreciated, it is too little and too late. This abandoned property hurts Newburyport in many ways. Your butters suffer directly each day. The entire city is diminished by letting such an eyesore exist without speedy mediation. The minimal efforts by Global over the last several months certainly should not let them off the hook for years of no maintenance and abandoning their property. If they really cleaned it up, they'd be standing in line, ready to buy the property. Please vote this a public nuisance and take the necessary steps to follow up. The potential of this corner needs to be realized and brought back to residences, not left a blight. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Yes, sir.
Good evening, dear members of the City Council. My name is Mark Sandron. I live at 91 High Street. Thank you for holding this hearing regarding the abandoned and derelict property at 107 State Street. In 1928, a world mayor, Andrew Gillis, Bossu Gillis, set up the billing station in defiance of the Newburyport City Council. The result is what we have now. And 100 years later, almost, an oil company has been in defiance of City Council. We would not be here tonight if it were not for the efforts of people in the neighborhood who live around the service station. And Mr. Roloff would not be here trying to justify Global's inaction for the last three years, threatening the city with legal action. This service station serves no purpose. It is only an eyesore, a concern for the, for the city's Department of Police, and has a negative impact on the whole neighborhood and our property values. The long overdue cleanup does not take away the fact that we have lived with this mess and gives us no guarantee that Global will actually continue to do what it's been doing. This public nuisance order, while not punitive, does allow the city to monitor and enforce what Global does as the transition to residential use happens. I urge each one of you to vote in favor of the nuisance order. And I thank you.
Thank you. Here is a hand of grace electronically.
Yes, hi. This is Pat Fallon from 108 State Street. Thank you, City Council members, for the time. I agree with everything my neighbors. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I agree with everything they're saying. I just wanted to echo that I urge the City Council to do the right thing and pass this nuisance order because Global has proven that over the last three years that unless they are threatened with legal action, they will do absolutely nothing. Newburyport deserves more than this. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next is Mary, Mary Murphy.
Hi, yes, this is Mary Murphy. Thank you. I'm at 106 State Street, directly across from the abandoned gas station. And I am also echoing the sentiments of the folks that spoke before me. In addition to this being a visual blight, a concern for our property values, there is still a high concern of an environmental issue despite the tanks reportedly being emptied, whether that is from residue that could leak or from the tanks themselves decaying. And I too am urging the council to vote in favor of this order. Thank you.
I think that's it. I'm not seeing any other hands. So another move back. Let me serve.
Stephanie, in connection, 93 High Street. I have submitted multiple written comments. I know that you have heard from me. I agree with the comments by my neighbors and others in the city. And speaking tonight, asking to find the global station is a public nuisance and approve the draft order before you. The draft order is not at all what we hoped could be done. It is actually fairly benign. And I don't see how it is, could aggravate the situation. It's a pretty calm measure by the city, given the circumstances. So please vote in favor of it and thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is March Pizalla and I live at 109 State Street. And although Global has been on the behavior for the past month, they have not, they've been missing for the last three and a half years. They have addressed some of the safety concerns of the property. I appreciate the blockage of traffic, removal of trees, removal of canisters. But it does not address the larger concern of a vacant business, the unsuitliness of an empty lot, and the eventual need for cleanup of the ground. The very photographs they submitted in their, they submitted to record the issues that they addressed. If you look at those photos, it still shows the dire, blighted look of the abandoned lot. The sign has been enclosed and painted white. But if it is the intent of Global to implement residential development, why was it not removed? The waste oil tank may have been empty, but why not removed? If there's any evidence, has there been any evidence in the past month that Global is moving towards residential development? Is there a timeline? What assurances do we have that upkeep of the property will continue? We have the community support. We have the 400 people who expressed it in the petition on change.org. Jim Roy and Michael Sales have vividly expressed their concern over the site in letters to the editor. I share their views. And I also agree with the other previous speakers. For these reasons, I hope that you vote to find global property at 107 State Street a public nuisance and support the draft order. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close public testimony and bring it to the council. Before I do, I just want to draw your attention to our packet. If that page 82 of the packet is a proposed order that I worked out with Jeff Lake, who's here this night, to pay you off, summarize it for the public who have seen it or had a chance to study it. I'll summarize what it does. It does what? Councillor Blake and I, Councillor, yes. Deal is justified in ensuring that after three years of neglect, that the good works that have been done in the last month fall. So it would require maintaining a building, maintaining the grounds, making sure that the trespass doesn't occur, maintaining the red planters that have been placed at each frontage. What it does not do, which I realize may disappoint many of your letters, is order demolition of the building. It does not order demolition of the sign. It does not order removal of the tanks. It does not compel a sale or redevelopment of the property. And again, I defer to our council to answer questions. But I don't, I don't believe that that is the nature of the complaint. There was evidence of concern about the underground tanks. Left, I feel that, I put my name on this proposed order, that that also implicates state statutes that, and I don't, I don't think it's an imminent nuisance to the neighborhood. I do think the other conditions were a nuisance and are at danger of becoming nuisance again. And one has not been resolved, and that is ice and snow. We haven't had our first snowstorm yet. Three years of not having any plowing on those sidewalks has been a major problem at probably our busiest intersection in the city. So there's also a proposed bond. We don't want, we don't want the bond. We want the sidewalks to be clear. But we need some kind of security in case it doesn't happen. We can't continue to have a situation where the city staff has to divert itself from other tasks to serve the public in order to take care of his property. You know, we have copious evidence of the police department having to visit the site dozens and dozens and dozens of times. We want to cut that down. So that is what the proposed order does and does not do. And I, I leave it to the council to decide, you know, what they want. We needed something to push against rather than just conceptually jawing here tonight. So we put it forward. Sorry, there's someone, a woman there, and I'm sorry, it's too late for the testimony. Hey, Councillor President, we're on the line. Say anything. We do have Councillor Devlin has joined us late. And Councillor Khan is here in person. So let the record show, we now have all eleven of us. I don't speak at all. But Councillor Khan and Councillor Chol.
Yes, thank you.
Please, please.
So, Council President, the intention though is that this will go into committee. Is that, I know it's being introduced tonight. I just would like to understand, is this going to be a special, what we're going to do in a preampl and decide tonight or it's going to go to committee?
No, I beg your pardon, the clerk's office, and I just had a signal crossing. So this is, we're acting under Chapter 139. So we're acting in a quasi ad hicatory manner. It's not what we typically call an order. The legislative order that comes in and goes to committee and all that stuff. The point is, we blocked out two hours tonight so that we can adopt essentially a decision just as if we were the Board of Appeal on an appeal for land use relief. So that, we would not vote to do. It was placed at page 82, but it probably shouldn't be placed on page 1. Councillor.
Thank you, Council President. You know, in, in looking to this, I'm trying to get to, yes, right? I'm trying to get to the ultimate yes. We all, it seems, in, from the discussion, we all want to get this to a residential development site to be sold off or developed, in or developed, right? And I'm not exactly sure how best we go by doing that. So some of my comments are actually going to be questions I hope we can debate, right? Because in this order, in, in creating, in addressing the nuisance, what I look through here, I see a number of these items that are, that are quote unquote resolved, right? We put them in the resolved call. However, they need to be continually monitored to make sure that they, they stay within the navigational buoys of this discussion, right? The part that I have a hard time with is that we all want the negotiations with the deed restrictions to move fast. And what I don't know and I don't understand, and I need some direction on, is what is the fastest way to get, for us to get the negotiations jumpstarted in, in discussion, in progress, to move forward, et cetera, along the way? I think, I think, you know, given the options that we have on the table, you know, just throwing it out there, I would say, I, I, I think the nuisance order is dated at this point. Except for the last couple of points, six and seven, six, seven, and eight are the only ones that are really relevant today going forward that we could enforce or we could have an interest in. However, in a, in a date certain continuance that has been suggested, I would want to have conditions on that date certain that show substantial progress in discussion. Not, you know, I sent a couple of letters and we had launched kind of thing. I'd like to see some drafts of, of documents to restrict, to release that deed restriction over form. And I don't know if that's possible or not. So with that, I'll say thank you for the time. The, thanks for my time.
Okay, Councillor Khan again.
Yes.
And I have another Councillor waiting. So is this a follow-up on that or?
Kind of, but I could, I've already spoken, so I could.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll come back. Councillor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to ask a couple of questions as well. So the first question is, I, I can't, I apologize, the camera's not clear enough for me to see if Attorney Blake is in, in the, in the room with us, so to say. But if this passes, this order, as you've described, it passes and it is not appealed by the, the other party, sort of what happens from here forward with it? I want to make sure I have a clear understanding of what happens from a legal perspective in the event that the, the order declaring it a nuisance does pass. And the second one may be a bit direct, but I'll ask it anyways. And that's to, to Global through their, through their attorney and, and the president. You can do this whenever you wish. But would the, would they stipulate to the terms of this agreement directly? If, if the concern is that they don't want a nuisance finding, are, is, are there any challenges with the actual terms presented here? Or is it the form of it being a nuisance? So understanding that that's a bit of a direct question, those would be my two, and I yield. Thank you.
Back to Councillor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So in terms of, I did have a couple of questions for our attorney in terms of the, I guess, judging this to be a nuisance. And part of it's the guidance of this body in claiming that this is a nuisance and in creating that as a path for moving forward. And so my question is, as we deliberate and then vote, two things is to, to make that verdict, is it a simple majority vote? Meaning six out of five to pass, this is a nuisance? Secondly, in terms of from a legal perspective, are we going to be challenged at all for doing that declaration within the framework of any laws that we follow at the state level or even here locally? So those are my two questions. Get clarification on.
Okay, other questions, we'll take our questions at once before we, Councillor Khan.
Yes, I'd like to direct line to Councillor Roloff. So if you have any, that's why I was waiting to, Councillor Blake.
Other questions for our higher lawyers?
No, you're going to come back there on the board of discussion.
I am, but this is just a kind of question. So let's, Attorney Blake, let's, let's start with that. And if you could, unfortunately, you have to stand on the spot too. I know, if you took notes, but you want me to recite the question back?
Well, I, I remember, and through you, Mr. President, my name is Jeffrey Blake. I'm here with K.P. Law, your city solicitor. The first one was what the effect would be if it wasn't appealed, right? And I think that was Councillor Z. The effect would be that it would be a, it would be binding order on the property owner, which would require them to come into compliance with and maintain the property pursuant to what is then. If they don't, we would be able to go into court and get a preliminary injunction, forcing them to do it. Ultimately, if they continued not to do it, at some point, we could ask for a receiver or we could ask for, for some penalty from, from a court over if the court agreed with us. The second one was the quantum vote. The quantum vote would be a simple majority of this body. And I believe the third one was.
Is there, I think, is there process of appeals of the question?
Well, yeah, is there, do we put ourselves at risk in any way if this is challenged? Do we have the justification?
Want to speak to the appeal rights of the property owner?
Sure, the property owner has the ability to appeal within three days. And they would appeal to a trial by jury in, in this, likely the Superior Court, because these courts don't typically have jurisdiction or something like this. And it says here under Chapter 139, Section 2, if the order is affirmed, the plaintiff, being the property owner, shall pay the cost. If it is a null, he shall recover from the account his damages, if any, and costs. So there is some, some liability possibly there. I do want you to know that damages and costs typically in the law do not include attorney's fees. I'm not sure what the damages in this instance would be, but certainly cost would be the like of filing a complaint. If there were depositions, they would get the cost of the, of the transcripts. And possibly if there were experts, to the extent that we needed experts, there may be some cost there. But that would be what our, our possible liability. I will say that under the, under the statute 139, Section 1, we're given a fair amount of authority to fashion a remedy if we make a determination that it's a nuisance building. I think that we, we need to constrain ourselves to what we're, what the evidence showed. And that is that there was issues with the public using the property, trash. There was snow. There were dangerous signs, dangerous parts of the property, and dangerous trees and the like. So as long as we constrain ourselves to those issues and don't try to go afar and try to make orders requiring the disposition of the property and the like, in my opinion, those are reasonable orders designed designed to, uh, effectuate and to, uh, a- the nuisance that we, that we would be declared. So, um, I think that a court would so fine if we acted reasonably.
Um, while you're up there, so, uh, Councillor Polly asked about, uh, how do we speed the negotiations? So, could you please give your opinion on, um, the proposal order does not require, doesn't impose any deadline to sell the property or convert it to residential, it just asks that, uh, every thirty days we can get an update? But what if we were, uh, uh, to vote for that, six of us were, what, what do you make of that?
Um, I, I, a- again, I, I think we need to constrain ourselves to the, the issue here, and the issue here isn't trying to get the other side to divest themselves of the property. We have a nuisance, these folks own the property, um, and I, I think that it may, it may start to be going a, a little bit far afield requiring them to, uh, to divest themselves of the property. That being said, an order like this with a continuing obligation on the part of Global, or the property owner, would in fact, I believe, um, exert at least some pressure on Global to try to get a resolution rather than having this continuing obligation to, to, uh, maintain snow, to go out there and likely maintain the traffic islands, including getting rid of trash, because if you recall, that was one of the, uh, one of the complaints that I believe our DPW, a Public Services Director has, that they were actually going out there and having to pick up all the trash. Um, ultimately, who knows what will happen with the concrete barriers that are, that are preventing traffic? And people just going there and using it as a place to lawyer, and a place to, you know, frankly, I think we heard, um, we heard evidence of, of drug use, needles, and the like. So, you know, with that there, with this continuing obligation and a ten thousand dollar bond that would be required to be renewed every year. I think that that would give the, the other side, the, the, uh, the property owner, some incentive to move forward and try to resolve this. And, you know, frankly, I, I think they sat here in, in this chamber and had voiced their, their, um, their willingness to do so. Now, with, with respect to hastening the process, um, I suspect, and it's just a, a speculation, you guys know far more than I, um, that they would love nothing more than to get rid of the property at this point. Um, I think that our issue becomes them dealing with a wire, another large corporation, and having, in, in my experience, dealing with these big corporations, um, they move, but they move at, at, at a bit of a slower pace than we would like.
Thank you, uh, other Councillors have questions, uh, for our attorney, yes, Councillor?
Well, I just, if I may, um, actually, refer back to Councillor, uh, Zee's question regarding, um, what if, what, what if we, the, um, Global stipulated to, to what is here, and I, I said, I think that Councillor Zee was suggesting, um, that they, you know, that stipulate to what, what's here so that we can, you know, avoid perhaps going down this path. I mean, is there, is there another sort of path that we can go down and accomplish the same thing? And perhaps avoid, you know, lawsuits and so, or, and so forth?
Sure, um, i- if we were to enter into an agreement with the property owner, um, we would make it a, a legal binding agreement, um, a contract, if you will. And if the property owner failed to comply with the contract, we would, we would then sue them in court for failing to abide by the agreement and request specific performance. If we were to do something like that, um, I think what we would, or we would negotiate some type of term in there wherein anybody that violates the agreement would be responsible for attorney's fees and costs for the other side. Um, and that, uh, the ability, would have the ability to enforce this agreement in court, and, and the like. But can we do it? Yes, we could, yes, we could.
Thank you, other, okay, Councillor Khan?
Thank you, Council President, to follow up on that, that agreement would be between the city, right, like the, the mayor and, right, it wouldn't be the council, the agreement would be with the city, uh, the mayor, is that correct?
It would be with the city, yes, yes.
Well, well, I mean, as chief executive, the mayor would sign it, but I mean, I, I think we would have the ability to approve the terms of the agreement.
So, yes, sorry, so just move on then, in terms of transparency, where would that be done? So I guess that's part of, you know, when we talk about agreements.
Yeah.
How is that done, where is it done? It comes to the council and enters as something like a contract that goes to committees, and a open process. So, just to understand those steps, I kind of like that direction in terms of an agreement, where we have both parties kind of working together. But, um, I just wanted to hear how that plays out in terms of transparency.
Well, I, uh, Jack, are you ever excited, I assume, you know, we could, we could authorize the mayor, right, to sign an agreement?
You, you could authorize the, the mayor to sign an agreement, um, and, and I think if you wanted to do it quickly, you, you would do it that way. Um, however, if, if the council wants to maintain at least some control over what's in the agreement, I think it could go that, that route as well.
Okay. Other questions for our attorney before we ask, uh, General Rollouts questions? Okay, not seeing any, all right. Rollouts, if you wish. So there are two questions that have come to the chair, uh, you. Let's start with the first one, which is, uh, you spoke in the outset that, uh, you were in opposition to the order. Uh, but in answer to Councillor Zee's questions, what is it about the order? Is it just that it's an order, or is there some, some aspect of the order that is offensive?
So, the remedies that are stated in the order, uh, seem to be reasonable, relatively benign. There was one little, there would be some clarification needed with respect to the landscaping and the fence details, since the plan is referenced as one that we haven't been able to find yet. But, the remedies seem reasonable, and are all things that we are relatively comfortable with. We don't think ten thousand dollar bond is necessary, but Global has said that it would, but that, that's fine. The biggest issue is that a public nuisance declaration for your property is a big deal. And the enforcement mechani- mechanisms and all the procedure of, uh, the, associated rights that are lost or gained because of that declaration are concerned.
So you have, and that, but this, my understanding is, uh, consultation with our attorney, who's been telling us is statute basically, you know, if, if the order goes in and the order is violated, we have remedies where we can basically do self-help, and then charge you for the cost. But it still has to be within the four corners of the order. So for example, uh, if you fail to, uh, plow and, and de-ice sidewalks, you couldn't come in and tear down a building. So, so I guess I, 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 I just, I'm just trying to understand why, uh, the order, as you say, is a big deal. If, if the, uh, if its terms are okay, you know, I understand.
Well, I think enforcing a chapter one thirty-nine public nuisance order, in the event that there's some compliance, as Attorney Blake mentioned, it's a different enforcement mechanism. It, you're putting a blank, a level of enforcement, uh, and authority over one parcel of land that doesn't exist for other parcels. And normally, that's justified because that landowner is either neglecting, uh, its duties and there is an actual nuisance, or is just unwilling to do what the city's asking it to do. So our view here is that this, it's the wrong mechanism for the problems that we're confronted with. Totally understandable that the city had concerns here and felt the need to do something. Um, but chapter one thirty-nine, la- layering this property with a public nuisance order, it's an extreme enforcement mechanism that the city doesn't have to use here, a stipulation? I suspect that Global would be fine with these same remedies folded into a contract that's enforceable by the city, but that also defines some terms, so this nuisance, public nuisance order, for example, is indefinite. Monthly status reports to the city council until when, right, the order doesn't specify. We could, we could work through this, through a simple agreement, I suspect, I haven't asked, been able to ask the question of Global yet, but the remedies are fine. So I think that Global would probably be receptive to a simple agreement that would put some reasonable terms in there, a reasonable time period, spell out the enforcement mechanisms, so that we're not um, being drawn into this statutory scheme, and it's really an archaic process for enforcement and everything else that just shouldn't be applied to this situation.
All right, uh, Councillor Khan, are you the question for Attorney Rollouts? You started? Yeah, to the chair, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President, for you. Uh, Councillor, uh, it seems that, uh, when you were here last, uh, this issue of a deed restriction was kind of a sticky thing. It, it, it kind of jams things up and restricts the ability of Global to do something that sounds from your testimony, um, consistent with what the city would like to have done, that is, convert this property into residential use. Um, what has Global in the interim time period done to further the, the, the aim of releasing this deed restriction?
Right, thank you, yes, so Global has been in touch with ExxonMobil directly, they've been speaking to them almost weekly since, even before our last hearing. Um, we've reported back to the Ward Council and, uh, at Council last, um, for Ward Two, as well as the planning staff, and we're happy to have monthly meetings or whatever frequency meetings you want to keep that going, but we have monthly meetings between Global and ExxonMobil. The first step that Exxon, uh, has undertaken is to start the due diligence of the property. They are receptive to exploring the possibility of releasing or modifying the deed restriction, but before they can make any calculations or define the parameters for doing that, they need to do their own due diligence with respect to the property. So, they've asked Global to cut them a check for, I don't know, I'm not gonna get into the details, but to pay, essentially, to pay ExxonMobil the cost that they would, uh, be, uh, experiencing to do the due diligence that they feel like they need to release or modify the deed restriction. So those efforts are underway, um, and, you know, it's a big company, but they are actually talking to us weekly now, and they seem receptive to the possibility. So there is traction on that front, um, but we're at the front end of that.
Well, if I may then, um, I, I'm, I'm not, um, um, questioning what you're saying, but I don't see evidence of it. Are you able to provide evidence in the form of correspondence, et cetera, that shows that those conversations are serious? And would you provide them to the council, through our counsel, through our attorney?
I would expect, so the first agreement that's gonna need to be signed with ExxonMobil is an agreement related to their rights to do investigation of the property.
Yeah.
That hasn't yet been signed, a draft has been exchanged, these are private negotiations, so it wouldn't be appropriate to provide drafts of an ongoing discussion like that. Yeah, once that's signed, maybe, if there's not a term that renders it confidential or something like that. I'm not sure this public hearing is the right forum just to provide a copy, but maybe to, um, city staff or something? I, I'd have to speak within House Counsel to know, and I'd have to see the written document, but that's gonna be the first concrete piece of, you know, executed agreement, then there's gonna be due diligence, and then Mobile's gonna define what they want uh, in order to release the modification. Surely some sort of cash payment, other liability protections, maybe, they're gonna put parameters on the building design. You know, they are gonna come back to Global and say, we're willing to do this if all these other things line up. So we're not there yet, there's no paperwork that I can give you, and these are private negotiations, so it's a little tricky.
And without taking him to a corner, but maybe I'm thinking, into a corner with an objective here.
Yeah.
Um, would you commit tonight to providing evidence, not just testimony, but evidence of those conversations on an ongoing basis, so that the city can feel some confidence that we're actually making headway here?
Yeah, in, in the status report we provided, by the way, I'll just remind you, we did offer to provide status reports, um, and also to, to advance scheduled meetings with city staff, so that we could report back and keep communications active and direct with city, with the appropriate city officials, whoever you decide they are. Um, in terms of evidence, I mean, I can tell you that, that in general, counsel, in-house counsel for Global was in a recent meeting with some of the city staff, and if it would help for him to document in a letter to the city that, you know, some description of what's happened so far, I'm sure he would be happy to do that. And then in our, in the status reports that we've offered to provide, we would be keeping you up to date as to where those conversations and efforts are going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zee, you had your hand up, did you still want to speak? Yeah. Councillor Shan?
Quick question, and just can you answer? Who, who from city staff has been in part of these discussions?
So that'd be, you want me to answer that, Mr. President?
I can answer, yeah. It's been, uh, uh, the mayor, uh, uh, me, uh, counsel-elect, Councillor-elect Jenny Donahue. We had one, we had one phone call, um, and there've been some emails. Who else?
Andy Ford, Jennifer Blanche, yeah.
Andy Ford and Jennifer Blanche up in the office of Plankville.
So, so, can you tell us how those discussions have been going? Do you feel like they are going in the direction of due diligence, and you, maybe that will help with the evidence that Councillor Khan was?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, uh, yes, I, I was lucky to see that General Counsel, uh, for Global was on the call, seeing really good sign. And, uh, I do think that they are, I, I have every reason to believe that they're acting in good faith with Exxon, I mean, I, I heard them. Um, uh, to produce a drawing of, of a proposed development as soon as possible. Um, first of all, you know, there's fear in the neighborhood that, uh, that the residential development will be too big, right? So, the sooner that we can know what it is, that helps. Uh, but also, you know, I was reacting, and staff was too, to what we heard from Global, which is that, in their experience, that's the kind of due diligence that, that our Attorney Rollouts is referring to, that Global needs to do too. For example, they wanna know that you're not digging any basements, right? Because they wanna be able to, to protect themselves against liability or environmental. And so, you know, that, but, uh, again, I, I didn't put any of that as a proposed order. I will say, if you go to a contract, you're no longer limited to what chapter one thirty-nine says. So, uh, I, I do wanna put that on the record. Back to Councillor Rollouts, and then Councillor Khan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, sort of, uh, back to you, if I may, and perhaps to Jerry. Uh, you just made reference to, you wanted a drawing of, of a development. Are you, were you that far along in the conversation where you're talking about a drawing? I, I, hold on, and then, um, the, the second question that I had are the, the, the continuance of that, is that you were, um, suggesting that, just now, that, like, going into a contract, it's, it's, it, it's broader, or what, what?
Yeah, what I'm getting at, what I'm getting at there is, chapter one thirty-nine is very specific about a dilapidated or dangerous building, in this case, dilapidated. Particularly dangerous, and, and so that's why I feel that proposing the order, I can't just load it up with all kinds of things that are unrelated to the specifics, the specific issue of the nuisance to the neighborhood and the city. However, parties to a contract can add all kinds of things, uh, and you're no longer limited by acting outside of the statute.
Understood, thank you.
So, and, and I, I, I wanna, uh, comfort folks that we scheduled this meeting tonight, knowing there would be deliberations, so we have until eight o'clock. Uh, I'd like to get all the questions out, and then, you know, what we heard tonight is really the first suggestion that, um, the, uh, Global, the property owner, would enter into a possible contract. So I may suggest we take a short recess and have the attorneys confer on that.
Can you, can you speak on the development?
Yes, on the building, it's just, uh, and I'm like this, I hold on, I, Councillor, uh, I mean, Attorney Rollouts, uh, no, it was just as conceptual as you heard. Basically, uh, the discussion was, well, in order to get the deed restriction lifted, Mobile wants to know exactly what it is that we're doing. And I, and I said, okay, all the more reason, the sooner you get this drawn by somebody out there, it, it not only helps with Exxon, it helps also with the community, because we know that, uh, uh, they were being, there's been talk, it's not a secret, about there would be a rezoning across, directly across the streets of Mar 3 District. And so, the city staff asked Global, would that be an acceptable rezoning? Does that would be consistent with the neighborhood, rather than some kind of a one-off thing? And they said, yes. And so that's what we're hoping for now, is, okay, how about a drawing of a proposed project that complies with Mar Three, with dimensional section? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, let me just clarify the, so that the ExxonMobil and the design process is something we talked about at the last hearing. So your understanding of that process is based on what I told you last month? In recent discussions with ExxonMobil, they have now, what they're telling us is, we're taking a different approach here. Uh, we're gonna do our due diligence, and we're gonna define the parameters of what we would accept. They aren't looking to get involved, uh, in the design process. They aren't looking to get involved, uh, in the design process to the extent that we weren't anticipating based on other experiences with them. So what the, the sequence that we're seeing here, based on the process that ExxonMobil has defined so far is due diligence by ExxonMobil. We attempt to negotiate an agreement with ExxonMobil that's going to define the parameters of development. For example, no basements, you know, no, no utilities, whatever, you know, clean, clean up the residential standards, et cetera.
Is that a fact? No basements? I'm sorry. You, you're saying that twice now?
Because in the deed restriction that's there now, if you look at that deed restriction, it's sort of daunting for anyone who wants to do a residential use development there because it's number one, it says you can't do that. Number two, though, it has a whole bunch of other parameters that may stay intact, which is and no matter what you do there, even if it's commercial use, no basements, you know, no occupied space, below ground surface, utility quarters have to be clean quarters. So they, they, they're going to be very detailed about what they're going to require in terms of the cleanup achieving residential standards and then just other details because it, for them, it's, you know, it's risk management, right? Once they define those parameters and we understand what those are, that's when we're going to market the property to the developers, but we're not going to wait until, we've already been in touch with several developers. They've been reaching out to us over the last several weeks and even before that. And we're in touch with them, but we can't really market the property, this is what Global's telling me, until they work out these parameters with ExxonMobil. So it's not going to be the process that I described last time where we need to all go in tandem and everything has to come together at the end with the designs and everything else. We're trying to work through these ExxonMobil parameters first. Then we market to the developers and then the people you're going to be talking to mostly then is probably not the Global reps. It's going to be the developer team, whoever that, whoever that is. Um, and that's when you're going to start seeing the designs and talking about rezoning and stuff like that. So the process has shifted a little bit.
Yeah, just a quick question for Counselor Chief Chair. We seem to have a multi-step process here, uh, an agreement to do due diligence, uh, an agreement, you know, uh, a report that's going to define parameters and what's acceptable. Another, uh, another agreement to execute that, remove the restrictions, et cetera, along the way. Through timeline, uh, you know, even a projected timeline associated with that. Is this a, you know, is this, uh, you know, uh, i- i- is every step a three-month process and every step a five-month process? Just so that we understand, you want to, you, you know, you, you look over parameters on a, on a signed contract. We need to understand the parameters, right? Is this a five-year agreement we're entering into? Is this a, you know, eighteen-month type of agreement we're entering?
Right. All, all great questions, and I have not been able to pin anyone down on a timeline as part of it because I'm not directly involved with the Exxon discussions. But I will assure you this, if we can, as we're moving forward with those discussions and if we're working cooperatively with the city, providing status reports, having our meetings with city staff, those kind of details are things that we'll be discussing and trying to flesh out so people can understand. I don't want to tell you it's going to be a two-month due diligence period. If that's off the mark and it turns out to be four, then we're going to be characterized as, you know, breaking promises and feet dragging and everything else. So I don't know yet. But it's a legitimate question.
Other questions, your counselors, because, uh, okay, I, I'd like to pose a question. So, uh, do you want, uh, our attorney to explore the possibility, we have the time, we'll go on a recess, a speculated agreement? Do you want, again, you'll be bound by, it's just a discussion. I want to be efficient. This is dragged on a bit as we're continuing to hear at once. We have time. Take a twenty-minute recess, fifteen-minute recess. But I'm only going to do it if there's something for Counselor Con.
Just a process question, if I may.
Yeah.
If this drags on until a new council is seated, does that affect the terms of our engagement with Global through their council? Does the process have to start again or will it just continue with the new members sitting?
It's unclear. I mean, under our rules, uh, our rules don't usually account for quasi-judgmentary proceedings like this. I would think in excess of caution, as the president, I would ask for a supermajority to carry it over to the next term. I don't want to do that. In part, you just came up also with your proposing a settlement, Counselor Jan and I, for the institution per se, and there was some happiness that they could be remanded to the planning board, we would have new members of the planning board. So by the same token, I've already put in this time. I would not recommend, uh, carrying this over to the next term. We've got one more meeting after this. Can't resolve it tonight. I, I, I would urge the council to resolve it, uh, in December. Other counselors? I, I don't need a motion. I just need a struggle. I mean, basically, if I'm wasting my time, I want to know that. Is it worth it, Counselor McCall?
Counselor President, in my opinion, I'd like to, I'd offer that we move to a, a contracted type of arrangement.
Okay, let's, uh, you just need to access. I'm going to, I'm going to call a recess until, uh, seven twenty P M.
Hold on, say it again. Did you call me, Richard?
I, I have not got to you yet, Counselor Devlin.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
And Counselor Devlin?
Wait a second, did you call? No, yes.
Thank you. And Counselor Iger?
Yes. Okay, uh, let me summarize for the recording because I had it on pause. We, the attorneys did confer during the recess. They believe that there is a possibility that we can enter into a agreement which would use the terms of the proposed order tonight as a starting point and then augment it with other terms, in a bilateral agreement, uh, having to do with working with Exxon, getting the property converted presidential use. So we're going to allow the attorneys to work on that. And, uh, there was a motion to continue this to our next meeting, six P M on the thirteenth, and that just passed. So, uh, we get another break now. Our next, uh, next, uh, I think, what is it, eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Thank you. Okay, over to round two. Uh, this is the tax classification here.
Notice, uh, scroll is for the poll hearing at eight o'clock. Uh, Counselor Con.
Okay, should we, did we, what's up? Are we doing the poll hearing first or should we?
I'm sorry, not the poll hearing, tax confirmation. Shall I read the notice?
Yes, in the, in the agenda, it says tax classification.
I already, I already berated it.
Oh, okay, that's another.
Thank you. I hope we're on the record. So, public hearing, in accordance with section one of chapter three sixty-nine, acts of nineteen eighty-two, city council of the city in a report will hold a public hearing on the determination of the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for F Y two thousand twenty-two. Hearing will be held on Monday. Today's date, November twenty-ninth at eight P M. By a hybrid participation if necessary, at which time all interested parties may be heard. All interested parties should look to the meeting calendar on the city website as the hearing date approaches. Counselor Jared, J R. Roll call for the tax classification hearing. Counselor Con?
Present.
Counselor Lane?
Here.
Counselor McCauley?
Present.
Counselor Shan?
Present.
Counselor Tontar?
Here.
Counselor Global?
Present.
Counselor Wallace?
Here.
Counselor Z?
Here.
Here.
Counselor Connell?
Present.
Counselor Devlin?
Here.
Hugh, Counselor Iger?
Here.
All present.
Okay, uh, is anyone in the chamber usually in speaking on matters of public hearing in two minutes? Raise your hand, recognize with. Not seeing anyone in the chamber. How about electronically? Anybody wish to testify? Raise your hand electronically. If not, any hands going once or twice. Fairness close.
Thank you.
Round three of ten. Okay, back for round three. Uh, this is a poll hearing. Kurt Jones, if you please read the notice.
Notice is such that, uh, there will be a public hearing which will be held on the petition of National Grid to construct a line of underground electric conduits including the necessary sustaining and protection fixtures for the following Chandel Drive in Port Mass. National Grid must install one hundred and twenty feet of three-inch conduit from existing transformer to private property handhold to serve Chandel Drive extension. Meetings will be held on this date at this time. This notice. At this time, all interested parties will have an opportunity to be heard. Location approximately as shown on the plan that was, uh, put on your desk.
Okay, I guess, uh, we'll call again and ensure everyone's here.
Okay, um, for the poll hearing, Counselor Con?
Present.
Counselor Lane?
Here.
Counselor McCauley?
Here.
Counselor Shan?
Here.
Counselor Tontar?
Here.
Counselor Global?
Present.
Counselor Wallace?
Present.
Counselor Z?
Here.
Here.
Counselor Connell?
Present.
Counselor Devlin?
Here.
Counselor Iger?
Here.
All present.
Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Perhaps you should start with National Grid. Go ahead and you can stand on a piece of tape on the ground and speak to the
John, but on National Grid Electric, as stated in the paperwork, uh, we'd better extend uh, from our existing facilities to serve a home being constructed at twenty-three Chandel Drive extension. There's ample driveway space, city property, to install this behind the sidewalk in the grass area for the most part. We'll be left with one driveway crossing at number twenty-one. And all the work in this particular case because the company's going to own it afterwards, and this will be done by the company and the company's contractor. And things that we restored as, as they are now. We're not anticipating anything in the street or in the sidewalk itself. It's, it should be detached in the grass area, with the exception of the driveway crossing.
Thank you. Uh, maybe you have a question, but, uh, let's see if the man happens to have a public. Name it as the record, two minutes.
Mark Day and the butter, uh, I was presented with the underground petition. I just need to know when they're going to do it and how much, how big the equipment is and, you know, you know, a couple of days before Christmas or, or a lot of people are starting to invite family and friends and to this whole area is pretty congested right now with contractors working and stuff like that. So the who, what, why, where, when, how.
Okay.
The narrative, I want the narrative on how this is all going to go down.
Last little question. Thank you. Anyone else here in person? How about online? Anybody online wish to speak? Please raise your hand electronically. Not seeing any. Okay, you'll maybe answer, if we can answer the question from, uh, from the butter. When do you think you would start this work? How, how much machinery you need, so on?
Well, the trench itself would be applied to give us the required coverage and stuff over the property. As far as point status concerned, that can be arranged with, with the council. As far as, I doubt work being what it is, schedule being what it is, I doubt that before the holiday, I think. It'll be after the first of the year, but it would be as soon as possible to eliminate so that we can get service in and eliminate the generator situation. Construction process.
What is the one-day job?
I don't think so. The driveway is, we're going to try and keep it in the driveway, but out of the asphalt portion of the driveway, between the asphalt and the street, there's, uh, actual, actual cobblestone. And we'll be in the, we're going to stay in the cobblestone if possible. If not, and we have to start the asphalt, we'd replace it with cobblestone instead, so there wouldn't be any difference seen. But the removal of the cobblestone itself and the digging and replacing it in time will take a little bit of time. I, I doubt the whole process will happen in a day.
All part of the day, it's not weeks.
No. No, not weeks.
And, and, uh, unlikely to start before the holidays.
Are you shutting the power down for a long period of time while you do? Oh, probably the power will be shut. Shouldn't be any power outage, uh, unless it's something done wrong. Because we're just going to, we're trying to in to the existing transformer. And that, and then it's just a matter of adding his connections to it. Everything is already there on the transformer. So you're plugging it in? Basically, plugging it in. You want it to power down for any period of time? And, and we're adding his wires to the connections that are already there available for it. So there shouldn't be an outage at all. If there is, it would be less than half an hour. You're not storing any bigger equipment there for like a week ahead of time or anything like that? You cut big old cuts? To what? You have all the cuts, you're not putting bigger equipment in that little cold set there that, uh, I doubt there'll be any reason, maybe, well, not to have to store it, you can be put a whole be larger after. Small as possible. We're only digging a one-foot wide trench, just that one foot. You're just going to get in and out? Get in and get out? Exactly. Not, not putting bigger equipment, leave it there? No.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else wish to, uh, comment? Yes, Counselor Gold?
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question then to sort of follow up with the butter. How do you, how, you, you notify the butter, right? I mean, how far in advance and how do you notify them and so forth?
Well, they can't be notified by mail if necessary, but, uh, it probably done, uh, by mail most likely. We'd have to notify by mail, I guess.
Yeah, we, we actually have an ordinance on that, so.
Are you in twenty-one?
Yeah, no, fourteen. He's fourteen.
Oh, you're a cross street?
Yeah.
Or, or, or the sort of construction, the actual digging and stuff doesn't interact with you, it's not your highway.
We're on a different transform. Well, let, let me get controls again. Counselors E is next.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Number one is, I was going to ask about the butter at twenty-one and the level of communication that National Grid has had with that, uh, with that. the level of communication that National Grid has had with that, with that home specifically so far, have they been communicated with directly, verbally or otherwise?
I met with the owner of the new home and did speak with the butter the day I was with him. Spent the morning there, actually.
So.
And the butter was made aware of the fact that he had talked about replacement of the sidewalk and so on and so forth with the owner, but since we don't have any intention to dig into the sidewalk, whatever we do disturb will have to be replaced, but do as much as we can in the grass area. Because the grass area, it's, the public taking extends an ample amount of footage behind the sidewalk to allow us to stay in the grass area. Which will be quicker and avoid cost naturally and destruction of brick sidewalk. That portion of the sidewalk on the street is, is brick. In, in the, at the frontage of twenty-one.
Right, yes, indeed it is, and I, I believe the homeowner paid for that, which is, which is why I was asking about it, okay, so, so you've, you've spoken to the owners at twenty-one Chandel, not the owners of the new construction, but the owners that are the actual butters of primate, where the transformer is now and where it primarily will go across, and then when you get to the driveway, your intent is not to go into the asphalt portion, but rather to go into the cobbles portion because those will be easier to put back, is that correct?
Correct. If you can't get, you know, to straighten the trench, if they have to remove any asphalt, it's hard. Right, and they would add probably a roll of cobblestone, they're not going to pass the driveway with asphalt. That portion of the driveway is in the public taking. But whatever's done will be done with the cobblestone like it is now.
Okay, and then on the other end we are connecting to, it's to a handhold, not to a new transformer, correct? So there'll be nothing visible above ground?
No, the handhold is actually, we take easement for that, that has to be on private property. That'll be on the property of the new owner at twenty-three Chandel Drive Extension. And we're taking easement from the, to have the handhold on his property.
But will it be visible at all above ground?
It's flush with the ground.
It's flush with the ground, okay. Um, okay, thank you for now, I appreciate it.
Richard has my contact information, I think we'll, we'll work before, you can always contact me at the office if you want me to meet you all there.
Close the public hearing portion, but I need a motion of what to do. Our custom has changed. Years ago, I think we usually put them in the same night, more recently, we have them in the fire in the committee. In case the workouts or have some questions, so I entertain a motion, what?
So moved.
Want to go to the committee?
Yes, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion on site is appealing to us.
Moving on to that, Public Utilities, Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Yes, Council McCauley, yes, Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar. No. Yes, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connel, no. Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Arden.
Yes.
Motion passes. And it's moved to committee.
Actually, kind of word, reading the code, it says that the committee on Neighborhoods and City Service will all the activities, yes, with the exception of public parking and traffic and wire and sewer, I don't think this is wire or sewer or I think actually we should assign to Neighborhood City Service.
What's the appropriate?
Yeah, I need to draw the motion, try it again.
Who's the sponsor?
Council Z.
I'll, I'll withdraw and restate for Neighborhood City Services if you wish.
Okay, so we'll call again, let's get it right.
Neighborhood City Services, Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
McCauley, yes, Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar, yes. Council Vogel, yes, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Yes, Council Devlin.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Unanimous.
Okay, so I'm going to adjourn the poll hearing, that's been referred to committee, thank you, and.
We did.
You did.
What were you, you answered?
To adjourn, you must have missed it. Roll call to adjourn, I thought. Maybe I forgot, I thought you only did a roll call to.
Poll here.
Both of you did.
Yeah.
That's okay, once or so, if you want a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, discussion of adjournment.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar, yes, Council Vogel. Yes, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Yes. Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Arden.
Yes. Okay, let's start again.
Somebody let the man know what's happening.
Okay, all right. All right, please rise.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Council Khan.
Present.
Council Lane.
Here.
McCauley.
Present.
Council Shan.
Present.
Council Tontar.
Here.
Council Vogel. Council Wallace.
Here.
Council Z.
Here.
Council Connel, present, Council Devlin.
Here.
Council Arden. Eleven present.
Do you have any thoughts?
There are two late files. Communication three eighty, which is a letter from Jillian Baker in respect to a dog incident. And request for a fence. We have an application fifty-seven, which is for a secondhand motor vehicle license for Plum Auto Works. Question to waiver rules and accept the late.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call, waiver rules and accept, Council Khan, Council Lane.
Yes.
McCauley, yes, Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel, yes, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Yes, Council Devlin.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, thank you. I haven't signed up. Always checking that, people who are, there are five, please, please raise their hand. Anyway, okay, then we can go right to the race hands, first I have Paralegal Sean Reardon.
Hi, Sean Reardon, five Lois Street. I hope everyone's doing good this evening, I just, I noticed on the agenda tonight, there are a lot of appointments up. And I would just ask you to consider maybe tabling these appointments until the new administration takes office here, you have one more meeting left in the calendar year after tonight. And I just think this would give my, my administration some opportunity to, to look at the appointments and then move forward with them after January third. Thank you.
Is Jillian Baker.
Good evening, President. Hi, good evening, President Aigerman and members of City Council, my name is Jillian Baker, I'm a new resident at six Orange Street. You have a letter from me in the packet, I'd like to thank you for giving me a few minutes. The message I'd like to convey is that I stand ready to assist with raising awareness of the importance of installing a fence at Mosley Woods so that our four-legged friends are free to run in our beautiful park. I'd also like to extend my condolences to Steve Kavanaugh, as he mourns his sweet Oakley, thank you.
Thank you, Baker. Uh, next we have, oh, sorry, Nikhil. Nikhil Ghani.
Uh, yep, Nikhil Ghani, eighteen Strong Street. Good evening, councilors, I'm requesting an appointment to Newburyport's Human Rights Commission. My information's in your packet. I moved to Newburyport with my family just about a year ago, and it's been a very welcoming experience. You know, in my day-to-day work, I work for an organization committed to economic, racial and economics and sorry, economic and racial equity, and I'm fortunate to work with leaders and social entrepreneurs around the country who are advancing equity and opportunity in their communities. And it's with that inspiration that I'm requesting this appointment, I'd like to contribute my time and energy to supporting the important work that the Human Rights Commission, as well as each of you are doing to ensure that Newburyport not only remains a welcoming, inclusive community, but can serve as a role model to other communities in the region. So with that, thank you for your time and consideration.
Next is Steve Cadd.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, just need your address.
Sure, sixteen Lafayette Street in Newburyport, Mass. I'm a twenty-year resident of Newburyport and I want to thank Jillian for introducing that letter for the fence at Mosley Woods. I am the owner of Oakley, the dog in question, want to just quickly give you my firsthand experience of that. I've had my dog for about two months, he's about five months old, and didn't really know about Mosley Woods, got introduced to it by a bunch of other dog owners, and it was really the best thing for my dog. And early on, when we walked up towards the ferry road section, I noticed that there wasn't fence there, and I thought it was odd, asked a few other dog owners why that was so, and they just, all of them said, hey, that's just the way it is, most of our dogs have crossed over that street at one point or another. And so I decided to kind of avoid that section. And sure enough, last Friday, we were in doing our normal route with our normal crew, took our left to avoid that section, and sure enough, one of the dogs took off towards that section, my dog followed. They, you know, went across the street and my dog got hit and killed instantly. And, you know, when I went up there, the driver was very distraught and was wondering, you know, hey, I couldn't, I couldn't avoid him, which thought to me that, hey, if he could have avoided him, would he have crashed into a tree himself or into another house? And so, you know, it really was something that I thought of before, but now that it's hit home to me, I really think it's something that is kind of a no-brainer. It's a great, great park, Mosley is a hidden gem in Newburyport, and it's kind of a shame that it's associated with a tragedy like this and something that could be worse down the road, so I just want to thank Jillian again and, and your guys' consideration to have a fence put up there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cadd, please accept our condolences. Jenny Donahue. Jenny?
Yep, good evening, thank you. City councilors, Jenny Donahue, eighteen Terry Street, Chair of the New Report Commission on Disabilities. I just wanted to quickly speak on behalf of a couple of appointees before you tonight, they're having their first reading, that's Debbie Campbell and Omnie Ramo, and I just wanted to speak on their behalf that we're very excited to have them joining the Disability Commission. And I also wanted to just comment on Mayor-elect Reardon's comments earlier, and I can appreciate that some of the appointments before you, you know, maybe should be considered to new administration, but I, I would urge the council to, to move forward with the Disability Commission appointees, given that the council, the, the commission is going to be dwindling in, in a short period of time, so I thank you for that, and if you have any questions about them, please feel free to reach out to me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. I don't have any other answers. So I'm going to close a poll comment. The mayor's comments. Mayor Holiday?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, you have a big agenda tonight, so I will be really quick, I know you've done the tax rate hearing. And I also picked up my old memo to the council, so I have to make some changes in that first paragraph, I will edit it in the morning and resend it out to you, but I ask for your support in the approval of the proposed FY two thousand and twenty-two tax rate of twelve dollars and one cent per a thousand, based on our tax levy of sixty-three point seven million and a citywide valuation of five point three billion. It's been really challenging trying to find that balance between the significant increase in property assessments and with the operating needs of the city. This does, if you do adopt the one point four one percent, that does decrease our tax rate by sixty-three cents to twelve dollars and one cent per a thousand. The firefighter contract is in your packet tonight, this was a very challenging negotiation process that was stalled during the surge and shut down from the pandemic, you have a memo outlining the changes to the contract as well as a redline version. What I think is very significant about this contract is that we work closely with AFSMI to move the firefighter dispatchers into the firefighters' union, which then allows us to be able to provide for the first time light duty to the firefighters who are injured on duty or coming back from any other type of physical issue that would prevent them from doing the full responsibilities of a firefighter. The name, the people on the team are listed in my update and will be happy to meet with Budget and Finance and other members of the council to discuss the firefighter's contract. COVID nineteen, I just want to let you know that our cases are the highest they've ever been for the month of November, that they're at a hundred and seventy-one cases and our deaths are now at forty-nine. We now heard about this new Omicron virus mutation, so please, please, please be cautious, if you haven't had your vaccine yet, please do so, if you've been vaccinated, please get a booster. And now children between five and eleven are eligible for vaccines. And the second dose for those who went on November ninth in the schools is being delivered tomorrow at the middle school, asking everyone to please take precautions. Youth Services update, you've all received the site selection final report. A meeting of that report will be hosted by Andy Egmont from Youth Services on December ninth, and we'll review all of their criteria at that point. And they're now temporarily on State Street and have been pivoting programs and finding ways to provide as many of their program services as possible, they are meeting with a local church, hopefully trying to solidify a longer term, at least six-month lease there, and I will let you know the status of that. Fifty-seven Low Street, while we continue to review options for the purchase of the property, I once again implore you to vote for this purchase of these two point two acres for two hundred and twenty K, I know Budget and Finance is scheduled to review possible uses and sent out information to each department that could potentially be eligible for twelve to. possible uses and send out information to each department that could potentially be eligible for 12, too, which will allow us for further discussion of options and use. High Street, Marches Hill Project, I don't know if you noticed, people were out there again. Allied was out there again today. That project is to be completed finally this week. They're finalizing the cobblestone work. I wanted to thank Allied and to all those who are involved in this project. It was really one of those neighborhood issues that came together. We worked through what we felt would be the best and most cost-efficient way to reduce the problems we've had with speeding in that area, and we'll be monitoring that closely. The Rock and Corbegg work continues on reservation terrace with GCA and SEMCO, and the closeout date is the end of December. Winter operations, I'm asking the public to please, please, please be patient with DPS. We are down seven positions, and those are our truck drivers, our plowers. We have hired two of those positions that will start in early December to mid-December. We have secured some plow drivers, but we're dealing with very difficult situation with Boston's paying, I think it's Boston or Watertown, $350 an hour to plow. Others are $200 an hour, and they're also purchasing equipment for people. So we're, you know, in a difficult situation trying to compete with the larger cities. So at this point, we have some new plow drivers. They've got new routes. It's just going to take us a little longer to get through plowing, and I ask that residents, please, please be patient. Bradley Fuller Track and Field, we had the ribbon cutting honoring Mr. Fuller's memory and his contribution to our community. It was well-attended and had several members of the Fuller family there. That was really nice. My sincerest thanks to Elise Reed, our Parks Director, for her perseverance on this multi-phase project, to Chris Huntress, the contractor, and to the following funders, the Community Preservation Committee, City Council, of course, as they have to confirm those, Friends of Newburyport Track, the Institution for Savings. If you haven't seen the recent upgrades, I encourage you to do so. It's really beautiful and a tribute to our community and all of our runners. Rotary Clubs of Newburyport, Amesbury. We had our luncheon that we haven't been able to have in the last two years. It was really nice to bring the seniors together from Newburyport and Amesbury High School. This is a longstanding tradition before Thanksgiving Day football game. Unfortunately, we did not win. Amesbury won 12 to 7, and I will be honoring my bet with Mayor Gove to complete a few hours of community service in Amesbury. The holiday tree lighting was yesterday, and it was so wonderful to see so many families throughout Market Square welcoming Santa and Mrs. Claus to our annual lighting of the tree. Thank you to the Rotary, the Chamber, the Newburyport High School, and Triton Bands, and the many, many youth who were there to support this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions for the mayor?
Just very quickly, Mayor, does completing the High Street project include striping or not?
No, it's too late in the season, I believe, to do that, but I will double-check for you, but I don't believe we can do any more painting at this point because of the weather, how cold it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Holiday. Where else is that?
You're welcome.
Okay. Onto the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following: minimum of minutes for November 8. There are three communications, Application 55, which is the cultural survival desire on industry, again, 716 to 717 this coming summer. That's to go to public safety. Communication 379 is with respect to appropriations for fiscal year 2023. That's to be received and filed. Application 56 is the second-hand motor vehicle license by RL Curry. That's to go to license and permits. Following two transfers. Transfer 113, budget contingency, $213,000, to fire salary, deputy chief, $8,006. Fires salary for firefighters, $180,000, and fire for paid holidays, $24,000, to go to budget finance. Also going to budget finances, transfer 114, sewer retain earnings, $223,000, to sewer maintenance and equipment, $40,000. CIP generator replacement, $183,000. With the following first reading of appointments. First two are referred to planning and development. Appointments 287, Stephen Moore, 10 North Axiom Street, to the Conservation Commission until December 15, 2024. Appointment 288, Jamie Pennington, 8 Park Street, to the Planning Board until 12/15/2026. Appointment 289, Omnie Raimo, 11 Marquand Lane, to the Commission on Disabilities, 12/15/2024. Appointment 290, Howard M. Adams, as a special police officer. Appointment 291, Paul Milton, 37 Milk Street, to the Tree Commission until 12/15/2024. Appointment 292, Debbie Campbell, Campbell, 10 Chestnut Street, Commission on Disabilities, 12/15/2024. Appointment 293, Joseph Morgan, 55 Hill Street, to the CPC until 2/1/2023. Appointment 294, Nikhil Ghani, 18 Strong Street, Women Rights Commission until 12/30/2024. Following items are removed from the respective committees, budget finance. Order 277, ordinance 94, order 280, 281. Communication 260, transfer 112. Order 297, 298, 299, and order 303. Planning and Development, ordinance 92, Public Safety, ordinance 96. That is the consent agenda this evening.
I'd like to remove appointments 287, 288, and 293 from the consent, please.
Other removals? Okay, so if those three were removed.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCollough.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel, yes, Counsel Devon.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCollough.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel, yes, Counsel Devon.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
First reading of appointments.
First reading of appointments. We now have. I'm sorry, we have some now. So first, we would have appointments 287, Stephen Moore, Conservation Commission, until 12/15/24.
Yes, Counsel Z.
I'd like to make a motion collectively receiving file 287, 88, and 293.
Okay.
All right, discussion. Your second. Yes, Counsel Devon, second, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just want to make sure, does this affect anything? I guess I don't know where in the cycle these appointments are. So do we have anything that's kind of going to prohibit any work that's going on with these meetings as moving forward? Is this kind of a required required need that we have to fulfill with these boards and commissioners?
Not aware of any of these three. They have a forum in all three. Actually, I think Commissioner Moore is already on the Conservation Commission, so definitely no effect there, but they have forums on CPA. Anyone from, who's a 98, Chief of Staff, if you want to speak to this, or? Counsel Z, use your hand up, so if you want to speak up, here you go.
I'll yield, thank you.
Chief of Staff, who's a 98? Nope, that's Omar's cat. There we go, now you're on us.
Muted, so.
You're muted, Donna.
Okay. There I am. Hello, good evening, everybody. Yes, no, regarding the set of these sets of first appointments. You are correct, Counsel Igerman. Stephen Moore is a real appointment, so he is already on the Conservation Commission. Looking at this next set, most of these appointments are three-year terms. All of the candidates are vetted either via the committee itself or the committee chair, and then through the mayor's office with an actual appointment. And then they are presented to the council for a vote.
Chief, who's a 98? We're not, we're not short on the Planning Board right now. They have, they have four or five, sorry, they have five members.
I believe the Planning Board has
They have nine.
One opening. Yes, one opening. The Commission on Disabilities, I believe, had three, and of course, Jenny Donahue is the chair, and she's moving on to the council, so I know there's a need there. The Tree Commission had two openings, I believe, so this would be a new appointment there. Joseph Morgan is actually on, I believe, the Historical Commission, and that the Community Preservation Act Committee has a representative from that Commission Act on the CPA, so he is already with us. And the Human Rights Commission, I believe, had one, maybe two openings. And we have a candidate there for that. So none, I think Jenny had spoken to it. The Commission on Disabilities had the most openings at the time. I don't have the actual rosters in front of me to have memorized what's opening, but each of these that are here have at least one, and I think just one, other than the Commission on Disabilities, having several. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comment? Okay, other questions to receive and file, roll call.
Roll call, receiving 287, 88, 293, Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCollough.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
No.
Counsel Vogel.
No.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
McConnell?
No.
Counsel Devon?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
Okay. Communication, you have, what are the names of the state, though?
Julian Baker regarding Ferry Road Docking.
Could I please have a motion on that letter?
Yeah, motion accepted by.
Second.
No.
Okay, hold on, is there discussion, Counsel Lane?
Yes, I was going to move that to public safety. I think that's part of also a bigger problem in terms of speeding down there and potentially some parking things that we need to address. So I was going to make the motion to move that to public safety.
All right, well, first of all. Okay, so the floor is, is yours, Counsel Lane is moving to send the public safety. Is there a second session? Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCollough.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
McConnell, yes, Counsel Devon.
Counsel Devon?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only communication, right?
We have a late-file application.
Oh, how did I beg your pardon?
Plum Auto Works, Inc., 71 Sturridge Avenue.
What can do, refer to licensing permits.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCollough.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Devon.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any transfers tonight that came in late? No?
Okay.
Not ready. We have a second reading appointment, tell us about it.
Sarah Holden, 34 Topman Lane, to the Housing Authority until December 1st, 2026. What can go through, second? Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane. Counsel Lane?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Here, Counsel McCollough, yes, Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel McConnell, yes, Counsel Devon.
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Orders, we don't, we don't have any later orders, this is true, right?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
We have the holiday parking order, which sets, as we do annually, a period of free parking, and the dates are December 18th to December 25th, 2021.
Okay, so it's not an emergency, because we will meet again.
We'll meet again on the 13th.
Yeah, I don't know.
Where do you want, where do we go?
Public Safety.
Motion to move.
Second.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCollough, yes, Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Counsel Devon.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
311?
Yes.
City Council accepts with gratitude a gift from the mayor, Gady W. Marl Charter Foundation, $110,000, to be expended in accordance with the Foundation's Funding Directive dated October 25th, 2021. Counsel Z.
Let's refer to budget finance.
Second.
Just one comment, I don't think the October document was in the packet, so if we can get a copy of that, that would be cool.
Very good.
Any further debate? Roll call.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCollough.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tonta.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Devon.
Yep.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, order 312 was a mistake. Again, that would have to do with our public hearing, as held as a dance. Orders.
Ordinance 84, which is a proposed first reading. Move to a date certain from November 8th, and upon some research, there's a motion approved on the floor.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Well, sorry, motion on the floor, right? Who's, who's the number of the sponsor in the second party?
Motion to approve was Counsel McConnell, seconded by Counsel Call. Way back in the [inaudible].
Speaker from a sponsor providing an order.
Okay.
Counsel Wallace.
Thank you. All right, so since the last couple meetings were was delayed, it was delayed on 10/25, and we heard the comments very loud and clear to get more feedback from staff and just give everybody more time. So we did that, and we got some written comments from DPS. We had, or Counsel McConnell had an informational meeting with Mayor, City Services, where all the parties were in attendance, so we could understand where everybody was coming from. And we revised the draft that went into the 11/8 packet, and what you have in this one is exactly the same. It was from the 11/8 packet. So basically, we took out quite a bit. You know, we took out about as much as we could with the other sponsor, and I felt comfortable with. The most important thing to me was making sure that there was some sort of process for public review of roadway projects. So what we ended up with is basically a list of streets to be provided in February, and then prior to any work done on any street, whether and then prior to any work done on any street, whether it's DPS or a planning project or private development, to have some sort of sketch and narrative with a few critical items on there that would be of interest to residents and to counselors. Just a little background, according to Mass General Law, city councils have jurisdiction over the public ways, it's, it's pretty clear. And the issue in New York report is that we have no voting board or no commission to approve projects that are on the road and nor do we have a public process, like a built-in public process. And I think it's time that we have something. You know, we're looking to do more streets and sidewalks, complete streets is more important, more people are using, you know, the facilities and we're seeing a lot more activity in public safety and neighborhood services, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's time to kind of, you know, keep, keep pushing ourselves a little bit and make sure that we have everything addressed in our roadway projects. So different ways to have public input is, there's such things as boards of public works. There's also voting transportation boards or traffic committees. There could be road commissioners, in other cases, the city council can do it. Actually, Newton, the city council does review roadway projects and they have a threshold for the types of things that are, that are reviewed. And they also have an accelerated pavement management plan, which is interesting, that was done by Navy Engineering. So this is not, you know, reinventing the wheel here, it's, you know, there, there is oversight for these types of projects. So just real quickly, I happened to come across, there is a really good manual, guidance manual from the state last updated August 21st. It's a chapter 90 guidance manual. It's available publicly online and they have a whole section on planning and public engagement. And I just wanted to read a blurb from there. So public participation is a key part of any planning process and is crucial to project success, whether collecting data, developing plans or constructing a project. Part of the process, municipalities can engage the public to identify local issues or needs, understand what is important to the residents, develop preferred product solutions or alternatives and more. And then they list different ways that you can do the public engagement. One, seek diverse representation, engage throughout the entire process, realize partnerships, offer multiple avenues for participation and remove barriers to participation. So I feel like with this ordinance, it's minimal, but it's something that we, as the council, can do right now to help move in a direction that, that we want to, make sure that residents know what's gonna be happening on the streets and we can use their ideas and have a community discussion on, on these types of things. And it's, it's the bare minimum that we can do without putting too much, too much work as DPS or planning. And I think it'll start to change the culture and we can go with it for a couple of years and tweak it as we go. So that, I hope you can support it and I will hand off to my co-sponsor.
You know, I think the revisions have made things a little bit simpler. The requests that were made are consistently what's submitted every year from DPS to the administration, but we're not asking for anything more, we're asking that we succeed really on the document. I think that we have a history, a short history, recent history of success on High Street, success on Merrimack Street involving the public, getting better input, creating better plans along the way. So I think this is a path to open communication and mutual working together.
So, thank you. Other councilors, Council Vogel?
Thank you, President, if I may, through the chair, I just have a question to the sponsors. Thank you. So I just wanna make sure that I understand the, the language and as it goes. So I noticed in 12-202, it says approval required. And then obviously in 203, as it relates back to the alteration, it's the approval process. So is, do all of these A through F then are presented to city council for approval? Or is that, is that more of a reporting process or more of a planned process? Or I'm kind of, kind of caught with those words, because it sounds like we need to approve all of these things here. Is that, I'm sure, I'm curious as to your intent.
No, the intent, the intent is to provide a list of submittal items similar to the planning board would ask for or Conservation Commission with their local wetland bylaws would ask for, just these are the things we wanna see in your narrative, because these are the things that the residents might want comments on and these are the types of questions you'll get from counselors. So, no, you wouldn't be approving every single one of these, but if there's any element in your project where this, these might come into play, we just wanna hear about them. And it's really, you know, we have all this and it sounds like it's a lot, but when we say construction staging areas, I would want, just put a note on the plan, staging will be at the end of the cul-de-sac, you know, because we get those kinds of questions. Or, you know, detour routes, so occasionally we'll go down such and such street. So, so that's all, thank you.
Council Vogel?
Thank you, I'm wondering if, if you would be up for any language change? Would you be interested in calling up perhaps something like, I don't know, scope, scope documents or something like that? Approval catches me, right? Because it's making, it's making it sound as though in order to get approval, all of these things need to be submitted. That's how I feel about it. I'm wondering if it could just be more of a, you know, scope or some, I don't know, we could language it somehow, I don't know.
No, I understand what you mean.
Yeah.
Question, could you please read the headings before you hit the list? What does the heading say?
Approval process 12-203. Prior to any alteration, public street sidewalk or windright way, the act will concluding without limitation when a city agency or officer shall submit in writing to the city council upon. That says A through F.
So it's the, the heading that you're asking about, councilor?
Thank you, well, it's the heading and then it's also, it sounds like all of, I mean, I guess it could be a not applicable. So, so yeah, it's, it's more of a, you know, submission details or something like that. It's, it's more of a, it's more of a, it's more of a dialogue than, than approval process.
More submittal requirements.
Yes, there you go, I'll take it. Friendly amendment.
Friendly, well, somebody needs to make a motion to amend, to change that to mittal requirements.
That was my.
I want a second.
Second, hold.
Okay.
Hold on one more moment. May I just, so, we do say that it does have to be approved. I just wanna make sure we still have that, but.
It's only the heading, it's only the race to the heading.
So yes, I would be fine with.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second from Council Shan. Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Lane?
No.
Council McCauley?
No.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Tanta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Connell?
No.
Council Devlin?
No.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any other amendments? Council Con has four.
Great, thank you, Council President. I think there might be some amendments I could throw in there, but just in, can I speak generally to this as well?
Sure.
So, I mean, I, right now, still probably stand in opposition, but I, I do appreciate and understand the intention. But in terms of my own research and looking at, you know, I guess part of it is always what are we trying to solve with this? And in talking with DPS and the folks there, it doesn't sound like the desires are completely addressed here. What I'm hoping, you know, we talked a little bit before that, you know, there is a new administration, which makes us very conscious of decisions we're making at this stage of the year. And one of the main things I see is that there is an opportunity to really, to, to really, I guess, work on this and make this something that could solve, I think, many issues, those that we actually identified in late 2019 in Neighborhood and City Services, when we talked about issues that we saw observed in the city. And as a result, a memo was drafted that, I remember sitting into that committee and there were some very good things identified in that memo that we've never really been addressed yet. One of which is having a policy document that would identify Emily, the streets and sidewalks, to be addressed. There were other things also mentioned in that memo which suggested a policy type of format. We don't really mention a policy type document. I went through our quote of ordinances and I just did a, a search of a few words that really stand out here. One is the word transparent. So I went through our quote of ordinances and looked up transparent. There is no way, no, no, no actually word transparent in our quote of ordinances. I also looked up process. So there's process in stormwater that talks about process in terms of treatment, but I didn't see anything in our code that talked about finding a process. So part of me feels like there is some really good aspects here, but let's get it right. And I don't see a desire that we really need to act ASAP to get this kind of just earmarked in our code to just say like, you know, check mark, we did that. If we're gonna do something, I'd love to see it pass unanimously as a consensus, you know, taking pride in our quote of ordinances. Because I actually, having done the ordinance review committee, it really made me look at our quote of ordinances differently, like something we all are authors of. And as a result, we should take it with some pride. So even in looking at definitions, we talk about ADA. Let's define ADA, what does it mean? Complete streets policy, let's pull that out in the definition as well, so that there is something showing where all these references are coming from. So I would ask my fellow counselors whether we continue this to the next term. We could keep this here, we're not gonna forget it, we know we're gonna work on this. But I just ask all of us to please consider keeping this going, keeping it and letting us address it next year, but just continue it with a super majority vote here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Council Z is next.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm also gonna speak generally. I'm standing figuratively in this case in support of this ordinance as it has been presented here with these amendments, including the amendment made tonight. And I'll, I'll try and just speak very briefly to it. So number one is, the core concept of this ordinance is that you have to understand and appreciate that the council does have jurisdiction over the public way. And if that's not something you strongly believe in, then I understand that it can be hard to sort of accept the rest of the premise of this. But the council does have that jurisdiction. One of the sponsors mentioned that there's plenty of history about this with respect to, most recently, things like High Street, Merrimack Street, approval of the safe routes to school, every single no parking order that we do, every single loading zone that we do, including a variety of different things. And there's also even more extreme examples like Phillips Drive, where there was an entire project that went with a roadway reconstruction. So I just, I mentioned that because there seems to be, or has been at times, a thread that the council is somehow overstepping where it should be or stepping into a jurisdiction that doesn't have, but that, that to me is not the case. And that's been proven out several times with those different projects and is codified not only in state law but also in our charter. So that's the first part. The second part is, you know, there has been some question about what exactly is the problem here? Or why is what we have perhaps not functioning the way that we want to? As a ward counselor, I will tell you that having construction in your ward on a street can induce considerable stress to neighbors despite them really wanting and desiring the roadway changes. A lot of it, you know, has to do with really not terribly complicated things, things like curb lines, curb cuts, crosswalks, trees and limits of paving and things like that. And, you know, DPS and ward counselors do go to great extent to try and alleviate those concerns, but a lot of the time, it's being done in the field, on the fly. And I think there is an opportunity for something that improves that by creating more of a notice and more information about what's to come. And in fact, elsewhere in our code, in the same section, you know, there is a discussion about notice for people to have an opportunity for upgrades to different materials if they want. And so the concept of noticing people is not exactly foreign. So that to me is, is sort of the, the sort of the biggest thing that I'm trying to solve is just giving residents and neighbors more transparency, more of a heads up, more of a hey, here's what's coming. And reducing stress and burden on DPS, on ward counselors, as well as on frankly, the contractors who often get questions in the street about what's going to happen. And I think that, that's something that's a win in a lot of ways for everybody. The third point I wanna make is that this ordinance has been through a tremendous number of revisions. If you go back and look at the first one, it was many pages longer, was considerably more strict and sort of more defined. And, you know, that could be looked at as a positive or a negative, but I do think that the sponsors have taken into account what the different feedback has been to try and, you know, frankly, ease this up a little bit, provide, you know, more flexibility and so forth. And I think that's the biggest reason why I'm gonna vote no, is when I vote yes, pardon me, is because when I read the language, it makes sense to me. And I'm gonna explain to you in plain language what it means to me. If you're gonna touch a street, you, you come to the council and you ask for approval. Touching a street is not crack sealing or filling in potholes or even doing a short run of pavement. It's doing a street, you know, it's doing over a street. And that would be something more substantial. And really, you know, should be something that has a little bit of process goes, that goes with it. The approval process here is not overly onerous. It doesn't even say when you have to come to the council, just says prior to altering it. You can come in very close to the approval, to the, to the alteration beginning. You can come in earlier if you can, it doesn't say anything about that. The reporting requirements, I think, in 12-204 are pretty reasonable. A list of what's been done, kind of what we're thinking for this year and what we're looking at for next year. A far cry from the dreams and hopes of the five-year beta plan that we had looked at. Now we're just trying to narrow down. So I do think that a good job has been done there to try and make it more reasonable. And so for those reasons, because the language itself makes sense, because the submittal requirements, as we're now calling them, are, in my opinion, pretty reasonable. I think this is something that makes sense to me, will be beneficial to residents, which is of course the, the primary goal here and will ultimately be a win for everybody. So I'll be supporting it, I don't think there's a need for further amendment, but I'm open to listen to anything anybody wants to suggest on my end.
Thank you, Council, other councilors? And Council Con, or then Council Con?
So the question I have, I mean, just, just because we have jurisdiction and can do it, doesn't mean we should do it. And I'm more interested in whether we should make this law. So my question, how many of the 351 municipalities in Massachusetts have it as the law and ordinance that the council or, or selectmen approve projects? Because the problem is that this might slow down work on our streets. That's the issue that was raised by DPS. So how, how common is it in the law? Not, not policy statements, not guidebooks, but in the law? How many of the 351 municipalities put it in the law? Because I don't wanna be the test case.
Council Con? Hold on. I guess that's a direct question, Council Wallace?
I, I did significant research on that, mostly cities. I didn't do all of the 351, some towns, but it's, it's very common. But they all do it differently, they all do it differently. And like the Board of Public Works, they review everything, water, sewer, finances. That's, that's like probably the, the biggest ones. There's probably at least 15, 20 towns with, with those. Like I said, Newton, actually, very similar ours, a city council shall approve this almost minutes. But there are, you know, again, they're, they're very similar to us, they're further ahead, but they're probably trying to pick out of the box and how they can get all their streets done using their accelerated pavement management plan and, and that sort of thing. No, I don't think we're gonna be the first ones to do this at all. And then a lot of, a lot of them also have, you see, traffic and transportation boards. So like, look at TSAC, but TSAC right now is just advisory. There's a lot of places that have like voting boards and so it's kind of traffic and some roadway stuff. I don't know the number, but I was actually surprised at, at how many there were. Now, the thing about slowing it down now, when you do a project, you have to follow procurement laws. So there's public works procurement and if it's under $5 million, you have to go design, the design, bid, build. So somewhere along the line, somebody is, is quantifying the numbers and the materials to do the bid sheets they can send out to bid. So that So that exists somewhere within DPS. I don't know if it's the consultant engineer that's doing that, or it's the DPS. So it's not like we're recreating real. Just when they do that, it would be nice to have that information up, upfront. So that they can get the feedback and have a better product. So it's, to me, it's not about slowing it down. It's just notifying more people earlier in the process to get a better product. Is that my answer?
Thank you, Councilor Cal. Please address the chair.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. President, and to you, to the members. I, I want to compliment the, the council's sponsoring counselors for their effort to increase transparency associated with the designation and then completion of particular projects. And that's some, you know, something that we all wanted to see happen. You know, the beta engineering plan has made our designation of which streets to do in which order more reasonable, more rational. And if we can explain it to the public, or take the time to explain to the public, I think that they would understand it and, and agree with the general approach that we're using, which is better than it was years ago. I can improve, certainly. And I think we should share and make an effort to share that information more widely. But I, I have some problems with this for, for a couple of reasons. One, I know that the counselor who previously spoke was referring to communities that, that have boards and commissions and panels that review everything for them. They tend to be, and, and based on our research committee, much larger communities than Newburyport. The Newburyport is, you know, we're 17, 18,000 people or so. I'm not sure that we need that level of bureaucracy. If you're not proposing, I, I understand. But I do have some other things that I want to raise. One was the fact that this is going to cost us a rough estimate of DPS, about $100,000 a year more than we presently spend on these projects just to meet the paper requirements and the reporting requirements of this act. If, if it is, if it is in fact adopted. I would personally rather see that money spent, you know, putting bricks and shuttles and wheelbarrows to work, as opposed to pushing paper. There's a benefit to it, certainly. However, is this the best way to do it? Is the question I think I've heard previously. And in my view, it is not. So my, my objection to it is not the intent. I agree with the intent. And I've tried to support this in committee and make sure it got a fair hearing. And, and the many improvements have been made to it. I, I think it's just the wrong instrument. Were it a policy recommendation, even an order? I, I, I might be persuaded that it's, it's worthy of, of support. As an, as an ordinance, that means we've codified something. There's no movement left or right. And I think we raised the possibility of individuals who are aggrieved because their project didn't get to the top of the list. Searching for a minor flaw somewhere in the execution of the, the terms of this, this statute. That stopped things dead. Or even if the council and administration disagree on something, on a particular project. Conflict there that is statutory and not just a policy disagreement. So I think what, what it is in, as a form of a statute, as a form of an ordinance. It, it's analogous to using a, a sledgehammer to drive a ton of thing. It's not an insignificant issue. But it's not an issue that requires that much force to implement. And so I'm going to vote in opposition to it in its present form. I think the intention is worthy. I think the, the final form that it's taken or whatever is, is more than we need.
Thank you, Councilor. Other councilors? Councilor Shan.
So I too would like to thank the two sponsoring counselors. They, they did an admirable job here. I will say that I do agree with our at-large counselor here. I was the Ward Three person that thought we would win the lottery and was going to have Warbin Street redone this year. And we had a neighborhood meeting and we actually did everything in Section 203. Walked the streets, actually spoke to the neighbors, everyone had an opportunity to speak. We talked about trees, we did it all. And what happened to us was it rained the entire month of July. And everything got pushed out. And we are in the, in the, bugged up the situation and hopefully we'll get done in April this coming year. I think if this were a policy, or to the counselor at large as point of order, that would be a better way to start. But I am very, I'm just making this an actual ordinance that is codified in our municipal code. So I will be standing in opposition to this. I would love to see this go off as a possible policy discussion for next year. I will say that the other at-large counselor has a, has a recommendation I think is valuable. I think if we did keep this in and looked at this, maybe it could be something different. Make it a policy or work on the verbiage and make it something in a more formal that, that would be fine. But as an ordinance, I too, a little bit weary of approving that. Especially when we are not cities of Newton and having that kind of budget, so.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Jackson spoke here. I don't think everyone's spoken. So go back around. So then Councilor McCallie and Councilor Joel.
Thank you, Councilor President. Just a couple of points. The reference to costing us money in this go around with the revisions. This is no more, no less than what DPS does today. So there is no additional cost, that was part of the revisions that we do. In turn, I've done some additional resource. Out of the 350 cities and towns, I've touched upon 170 plus. They all have some sort of codification, be they at the Department of Transportation Board or a review process. All of them start with the sentence, for the most part, review a city engineered draw. Okay, we don't have that in here because of the concern of additional costs. I know we talk about big cities and towns, but two weeks ago in the Daily News, West Newbury published the seven streets that they were going to do in this upcoming construction season. They listed they were going to do mill and overlay, complete rebuild, et cetera. That was public hearing. There's no one in this room who could tell us what the next street is. And that's unfortunate. And so why do we need to have an ordinance of this? We need to entrust our credibility with the public for that. We've stated time and time again, this council, that we're going to spend $2 million, up to $2 million to pave the streets. We haven't done that. We, we're, and I'll take this number from the mayor's, state of the city. We have paved in 12 years fifteen miles of road. Okay, and when we take out High Street and Merrimack Street, we paved nine miles of road. This process will increase the efficiency by helping do what we do best, plan. And increase, we're trying to get to three miles a year. We're doing .8 miles a year, less than a mile a year in road resurfacing. Run the 70-year plan to do the beta study. Getting it to three or four gets us into a 20-year cycle, which is more reasonable going forward. Not asking for the world, we're asking to help in the communication. We're asking to help build a mutual relationship with DPS. We're asking the public to weigh through us instead of being frustrated with DPS. And we're doing it through ordinance because we want to put a stake in the ground that we hear what the people are saying every single day, that my roads are terrible and I have no idea where I am, because there is no list. They, our residents don't know where they stand. And so for those people who are asking and advocating, I hope that you can reconsider when we actually come time to vote, that we're actually making a stand for transparency for our, our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cal, Vogel is next. Back to Councilor Cal.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may do the chair, I, I just have a question to give to the sponsors. So I'm just curious as to how you see this. I, I have a little bit of question about the process. So we now, instead of having approval process, we now have the submittal requests, or what we've decided to call it. And then, so backup under alteration is, requires approval by order of the city council. So I'm, I'm curious as to how you, what, what do you expect to happen? So, so these, these come in, and then they go to committee or, yes, thank you. I'll, you understand my question? I'll sit down. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor President. To answer the question, it will happen just the way Merrimack Street did, that we were on that committee. We would get a request, we would get a design, we would get a plan. Then we'd get referred to committee. In most cases, it would go to public safety, like what in neighborhood city service it, depending on what was designed there. They would, we would review it with the public. Again, you were part and parcel of that as part of the committee. We saw that the public had great insight and input sometimes. It came because they lived there every day, they know where the puddles are. They know where, you know, the curbing should go. Those are the types of things that because they live there, they actually see and know everything that goes on. That's important. We don't have a mechanism to review or introduce complete streets or livable streets or anything like that to have a discussion about it until it's too late. You saw that yourself when we were talking about Merrimack Street. The livable streets, people came in at the last minute and said, oh, maybe we could do this, or maybe we could do that. But it was too late, they had already paved the road. They had already done something. So this is part and parcel of this process. So to answer your question specifically, we come in, it would go to committee, it would get that in, it would come right there, most likely the next meeting, and we would go now.
Councilor Vogel, do you have any questions or, Councilor?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor President. So, you know, I, I hear, again, I hear what everyone's saying and I, I see the frustration. I understand the frustration. But I still go back to a couple of things. I, I think adopting this, and I hope people recognize this, doesn't mean we'll necessarily get more mileage of, you know, done. You know, in terms of the 15 miles we heard about. I don't see this as getting us that, that answer, that solution. I still think that at the end of the day, when we think about what the intention is, I, I, I understand that there's transparency. I understand there is a process that is somewhat followed by DPS. But it's not really, I think the issues are deeper than that. And that's why there's, we have older infrastructure and there's, you know, that's why the beta, the, the whole beta report is key because it does provide us with that details of our cities. Kind of how the city is in terms of updates for the different regions or neighborhoods. And so there's still a lot of work to be done there, which we haven't even talked about. But I'm going to go back to a couple of basic, I think, concepts. And I, and I think what this, this has revealed is that what we're doing right now isn't working. And I, and I will acknowledge that, I hear that. And I do take considerable amount of, of concern that about our public, our, our streets and sidewalks. I think it was alluded, if we don't support this, we don't see that as important. And I disagree with that because I, I do see it as an important issue and I do hear it when I talk to residents. But I think what we learned here is that if the process we have now is not working, the solution is to codify this type of, of, of language and it will solve it. And, and I don't quite believe that. And I did look at other communities and I know it's been referenced that it's all there. But I actually, you know, I actually love doing that. I love researching other codes, Muni codes and E codes. And I really did type in certain words and I went to certain chapters. And I couldn't find it, so I'd love to get a list of some, so maybe I'm missing it. I do understand if there's other boards doing this work. I think that'd be great for the new administration to hear too. And if we know things that are not working, I see this as an opportunity to, to actually work and sit at the table and figure out what is the best mechanism. I love the idea of, of an order. I didn't think of that, but that might be one way to start getting a plan base that comes before the council annually, like we do with the snow and ice plan. So I feel like there's a lot of things that we could do to, to get to that, to the frustrations that I was experiencing. And I, I, at that point, I think I will stay quiet. I have no more to say, but I will not be surprised.
Thank you, Councilor. Back to Councilor Z.
I, I just wanted to take one, one other swing at it. And that, that is to say that it seems like the, the arguments in opposition to this revolve around seemingly some, some different things. One could be that there is a cost, but I think the sponsors sort of addressed that. Two is that, you know, that this should be somehow a policy and order. I'm, I'm not respectfully sure I understand that argument because it seems to be that we, we maybe kind of want to have a rule, but we don't want it to be strong enough that it's enforceable by way of ordinance, which doesn't make sense to me. If you sort of agree with the concept of it, then the form of it should be, you know, should be okay to be an ordinance, that, that, that maybe there'll be a reduction of work. But I think that's been addressed. As usual, I, I personally am not a strong believer in terribly looking at what other communities are doing. But I, I understand that it gives some, some guide to things. And I personally don't think Newburyport can or needs something like a transportation board or something more substantial. So I actually think this is already a middle ground proposal. We are the city council, we're a small city, and we can handle this work as we have done, as it's been done. So when it really comes down to it, I guess what I'm, what I'm not understanding is again, looking strictly at the text here, it's just to me so incredibly reasonable to come in and ask the city council to approve something and to provide A through F in 12203, which I think are pretty, you know, what are the bounds of the paving? How are you going to let the neighbors know? Where will you stage things? Are there any trees coming down? Where will the crosswalks and ADA ramps be? Very, in my opinion, simple things. And frankly, things that you couldn't physically do the project without knowing. So you can either figure them out on the street while you're doing it, or you can try and do a little bit before and let residents know. So I, with, with respect to that, I don't understand some of the arguments and opposition. It seems pretty straightforward to me. It's considerably more straightforward than the first iteration of it. And I'll yield on that. Thank you.
Councilor, other councilors?
Roll call. Motion approved and amended. Councilor Con.
Yeah.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCallie.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
No.
Councilor Tanta.
No.
Councilor Vogel. Yes. Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Con.
No.
Councilor Javelin.
Yes.
Councilor Righman.
Yes.
We have passed.
Thank you. If I could, I'd like to suggest maybe combining the four second readings into one motion. Anyone willing to do that?
Somebody.
And for the public, they have to do with the loading zone on Liberty Street, apartment restriction on Carter, parking on Union and Huska on Buck. So we have a motion and a second reading discussion.
For the record, this is second reading to ordinance 8699, ordinance 100 and 101. Roll call. Councilor Con.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCallie.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Tanta.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Javelin.
Yes.
Councilor Righman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. On the committee items, right, the only late ordinance we do. On the ad hoc committee of development, we did have a meeting, I think I meant it last time, on the permanent reckless legislation. The handout is, the committee is hung up on what's in charge. Because it's no longer the public urgency, it's our valuable pieces of property and benefits to select, select you in downtown. And so I'm not optimistic this is going to come out on the 13th, but we'll try. On the ad hoc committee on market managing, we have set a meeting on Order 296. Remember that we, this is on the restroom facility. We had omitted that from our vote because it was somewhat controversial and it's extra cost. So there will be a meeting on Tuesday, tomorrow, day 7, at the time that I say, 6:30. 6:30, that would be on Zoom as well. And then we'll bring it back for consideration as an order. Right, we could have proved it before the term ends.
Mr. President, let's start with a motion to approve, as was amended in committee, the residential factor, which is Order 297. Mr. President, the committee met to discuss and deliberate on this. In attendance was Jill Brennan and Ethan Manning, Finance Director and Assessor, who I believe are also sitting before you in chambers. We discussed, not terribly at length, but at length, the concept of setting a factor that would be different than one, which would shift some of the tax burden from residential to commercial. Um, and we discovered a couple of interesting statistics that may be of assistance to you as you consider. The city now is approximately eighty-seven to eighty-eight percent residential tax base, and, um, there are about eight thousand total parcels in the city, four and a half thousand, four point five thousand are single families, and two point five thousand are condo units. So these numbers all show a picture of a city that is largely dominated by residential. And, um, a, as was discussed in committee, typically at that level of residential versus commercial and industrial, a, a factor of other than one would not be considered. And in fact, in speaking with Jill Brennan, um, since this has been tracked since nineteen eighteen, there was only one year where the residential, uh, factor was set to something other than one. And that was nineteen eighty-six, when it was shifted to one point five, and that only lasted for one year. Um, we did not, again, spend a ton of time on this because there wasn't a great appetite in committee to consider setting it to anything other than one. So in the end, a committee vote was taken, and, um, it was three to zero in favor of a fax, a tax factor of one. And I'll just remind you as well that Director Manning and, and, uh, and Assessor Brett Brennan also provided us with the, sort of what the shift would look like in their tax presentation. So that's why it was amended to one point O. Again, that was three zero in committee.
Counselors on this item, any questions for staff or city? Any none? Roll call.
So that was a motion by Counsel Z, second in by. Thank you. To set it to a residential factor of one, Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Ragan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. President, is a motion to approve order number two ninety-eight, which is the FY twenty-two tax rate, as amended in committee, which is to set the tax rate to a, a value of twelve dollars and one cent per thousand. Mr. President, in the same meeting, the committee deliberated the tax rate. Um, as the mayor had mentioned, um, you know, there were several different options available. Um, that was presented to us in the same information that Director Ethan Manning had presented. The long story short is, uh, of course, you have a levy limit, and you have a tax rate that comes off of that levy limit increase. And then there are potential options you can use to soften or reduce the, the total percentage tax increase that would be, um, you know, i- i- that would be felt, uh, from one year to the next. The administration's proposal is to utilize the one point four one percent increase, which yields the twelve dollar and one cent. In order to get to that twelve dollar and one cent tax rate, you obviously have to backfill the amount that you essentially want to soften. And that was in the proposal that was presented. There were several different sources of funds that were utilized to get to that number. And that included, uh, some of the, or all of the cuts that were made by the council and some additional funds as well. So in essence, uh, by setting the tax rate where it was, where it is proposed here, we'd be leaving about six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars on the table, for lack of a better way to say it, in order to present a lower tax rate, um, to residents. Um, the other, a couple of important things that I want to mention that were addressed is, of course, um, the one point four one percent, the two and a half percent that we hear from the levy limit are probably numbers that float around in many residents' heads, and they may be wondering why, uh, their taxes will be going up more than that. And that's because it's a little bit more complicated than just as simple as a levy limit. It also, of course, has to do with the, uh, what is happening with the assessment on a specific property and then excluded debt and new growth, all of which play a factor. And they're basically, it's all math, but basically plays a factor. And so the four point one percent is what the actual average, uh, increase for a home will be. Um, as Jill Brennan, who's there, could probably speak to, assessments have obviously gone up significantly, and that's part of it. Um, but that, of course, will also drive down the tax rate. Um, new growth continues to be a, a fairly substantial factor, and we do have a good amount of excluded debt as well. And so the average increase will be four point one, does not mean, of course, because it's an average that everybody's going up four point one, there will be homes that are going up less than that. There will be homes that are going up more than that. That did have to be noticed. And so, uh, that was presented, and I, I believe is available on the city website or directly from the assessor's office if, if, um, if desired. So the real question in terms of our debate is, do you want to accept the recommendation of, of the mayor and now of the committee as well by a vote of three to zero? Um, the other options would be to go the other direction and say, no, we'd rather collect that additional tax money and then deploy it however, to be determined at a later date, or let it fall to free cash eventually, if not expended, or go in the other direction, uh, which would be to try and backfill additional increases, perhaps using something like free cash to drive a tax rate lower. Uh, we did discuss this in committee, and we talked about a range from one percent increase all the way up to the two and a half. And to give you that range, the tax rate would go from eleven ninety-six at the low end to twelve dollars and thirteen at the high end. And then, again, the proposed suggested amount is twelve dollars and one cent. And if anybody cares, the average tax bill at those would be eighty-three ninety-six at the low, eighty-five fifteen at the high, and eighty-four thirty-one at the recommended. So I hope I've anticipated the questions that folks may have, but their committee comes to with a recommendation to follow the mayor's suggestion of twelve dollars and one cent for the tax rate. And, um, that was, again, by a vote of three to zero.
Other counselors on this item? Counselor.
Yeah, thank you, uh, President. What I, what I want to address is the issue is to whether or not we should, uh, go to the full two and a half percent uh, and set the tax rate at twelve dollars and thirteen cents. And I'm going to use a specific example. We've been talking about streets and sidewalks. Uh, and, um, we passed a bond authorization, one point two million dollars per year over five years, for a total of six million dollars. Uh, in, in the budget projections provided by the Finance Director, um, we, uh, projected out five years, and that cost, uh, uh, come, you know, uh, put a demand on, on debt service, right? What I did is I, I calculated the difference between one point two million dollars per year and two million dollars per year, right? So to calculate that over five years, that comes to nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, right? So if we taxed at twelve dollars and thirteen cents, right, uh, we would have an additional six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars approximately that would cover over the next five years approximately sixty-seven percent of the cost of meeting that goal of borrowing two million dollars, in addition to the chapter ninety funds, in addition to the meal, uh, tax funds, in addition to what other, any other fund we can get, right? So it seems to me when we talk about something like authorizing a bond, because we favor something we really, really like, which is, you know, paving more streets and sidewalks, right? We need to, you know, stand up on our hind legs, look at the voters, look them in the eye, and say, if you want your streets and sidewalks done, pay more taxes, right? And we have an opportunity to give that message right now, right? So I just want to make that very, very clear, all right? That, that two-thirds of the cost over the next five years, fiscal year, the current fiscal year, twenty-two to twenty-six, right? We, we could cover. There's some technicalities there, all right, in terms of the next council would have to, uh, authorize additional borrowing, right? But we, we can cover a, two-thirds of the additional borrowing so that we could do, get to, to the four or five councils' goal faster of hitting that, what, three or four mile streets per year? So we could do all points. So that's the point I want to make. Thank you.
That motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that as a motion.
So the motion would be, uh, to the twelve thirteen?
Twelve dollars and thirteen cents per thousand.
There's second on the motion to the twelve dollars and thirteen.
I'll second it first then.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? So the motion of any of the twelve?
I have a question. So say you did that, could you earmark a certain amount of funds for that difference specifically for roads and sidewalks or?
No, no, I don't believe you could. You'd have to, off, the next council would have to authorize additional borrowing and with, uh, and then, uh, the, uh, I, I believe the incoming mayor has indicated that he wants the all the two million dollars per year. So I, I think he would go along if he offered one. But I'm, I'm speculating. I can't guarantee, I cannot, we cannot, uh, constrain this.
Counselor Z, you got your hand up to get it down. So any other counselors who are going to roll call? Counselor Khan and Counselor Vogel.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I mean, I know we have to, uh, here at Flowering, and, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think of the implications because I know we talked at length in committee to try to understand how much of a difference it would make, and it seemed really small. We're trying to move the needle to be more helpful to residents if we could. Um, we also know that every resident is affected differently. Um, but I, I'm just curious, um, if we were to do this, maybe I'll ask this to Ethan. If we were to do this for this year, in terms of the projection for the next years, can we see a benefit in possibly not increasing next year? How would that affect us? I guess I'm trying to understand what the ramifications are in trying to get to a place where we could do and do more, um, yeah, streets and sidewalks, as we're talking about. What does that mean for moving forward? Because I know in the formula that's used, um, we, we have this equation, the levy limit is based on, um, the, the end of the year, uh, new growth. And, and I know right now new growth is projected to be changing enough. So I, I just, I guess I'm curious, what you see is if we were to do this, how does that affect setting the rate for the next year and so forth, if that makes sense?
Well, if we could, so, uh, Director Mann, uh, first, what's the round vacation going to twelve dollars and thirteen cents? I think, yeah, the immediate round vacation. Then what does it mean for fiscal year twenty twenty-three?
Okay, yes. So, so by going up to the, the twelve dollars and thirteen cents per thousand, we would be taxing up to our maximum levy limit, while there's a crop two and a half. Um, so a common misconception with the levy limit calculation is that you're not simply multiplying your, your current levy by two and a half percent. You're calculating the prior year levy limit by two and a half percent and then adding new growth, uh, and then excluded debt service. Um, so regardless of whether the, the tax rate was set at twelve thirteen or set at twelve oh one, the actual levy limit will, will never change, uh, based on, you know, whatever tax rate is established by the city. Um, what it will do is, it, when we want to set next year's tax rate, um, at twelve oh one, there will be a, a bigger gap to make up if the city wants to tax up to the levy limit next year. Um, so by taxing up to the full levy limit this year, they would, it would close that gap.
I'm sorry, what's the gap?
Yeah, so the, it's twelve cents per thousand.
But no, no, I mean, in, in, in absolute dollars, like what were we using? I, I had so many numbers in mind. What are we using for free cash right now?
Right, uh, yeah, so the amount, um.
Oh, free cash.
Six hundred and thirty-seven, um, in available revenue, um, that would be foregone.
Six seventy-seven.
Or captured, i- if you went up to the full rate.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, did you want to ask the following, Counselor Khan, is that?
No, I'm good right now. Thank you.
And Counselor Vogel next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just as a general, if I may, just, you know. We, we have a lot of demands, right? We, we have, you know, we're talking about home for youth services. We're talking about, I mean, streets and sidewalks. I mean, we live streets and sidewalks, right? We've got the bulkhead. We've got the park. We've got, we've got a lot of demands. And you, you can't do both. You can't demand, and you can't say, I want, I want, I want, but I don't want to pay taxes. I mean, that, that's sort of where we're at, right? It's, it's a hard, hard thing to understand, but you got to pay for it somehow. I would, I would be in favor of raising it all the way up. And I know that then there's this discussion about free cash, which is cash leftover or money leftover at the end of the year that we didn't spend. And some people think that that's not a good thing, that it shows that we're not really managing our money well. But the fact of the matter is, is that we are managing our money really well, and we get triple A bond ratings, and we get awarded for the way we manage our money. And it's okay to have that free cash, and we can use it for things that come along, and we can buy the things that we need. It's, it's a hard pill to swallow. Taxes are a hard pill to, pill, pill to swallow, especially when you're either fixed income or lower income and so on and so forth. But it's something that we have to do. I am in favor of going all the way up to the two and a half. I'll put that on record, and I'll vote that way.
Thank you, Ms. President. I just want to address a couple of questions. So first of all, um, the six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and change that is proposed to be defrayed here, none of it in this, in this year is coming from free cash. It is coming from cuts that the council made, uh, less the two supplemental budgets that the, the council subsequently approved, new growth over the estimate, which was about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and then budgeted so-called excess levy capacity. So basically, money that, you know, is excess levy and does not need to be collected. And, and that's the point I want to bring up to people is, a lot of people are starting to have, um, eyes for how you could spend this money, which is perfectly a rational and reasonable argument to have. The several at-large counselors have mentioned that. Others have asked if you can earmark the money. I just want to remind you that we're setting the tax rate against a budget that we worked on and passed together several months ago. So the point is that it's, and sometimes one could argue it's a backwards process, but we set the budget, and then we go and seek to collect the money we need to fund that budget. So if you want to, typically, the best cycle to do would be to have a discussion at the time of the budget for why there isn't, say, money in there for capital, which is, at least for me, a theme that I've been talking about for several years. And then when you get to this point, it would be obvious that you need to collect that money in order to make good on the obligations that you presented. So I'm not saying that the argument about what could you use this for is blown out. I'm just saying that if you don't, if you choose to go up to the full, you, you are going to create, in a sense, I'm doing air quotes here, but you're going to sort of create some additional monies that are unallocated, and they'll go back to being unallocated, which means that they are subject to a supplemental budget from the, from the current administration or the new administration. Or failing that, they will ultimately fall to free cash at the end of the next, you know, at the end of this current fiscal year. I'm just trying to point out, because we'll be right back in the budget cycle again before you know it, that to me, that is the more appropriate time. And in, in my experience as a counselor, now speaking for myself and not answering questions, I have opposed these kinds of things in the past because my efforts to try and drive additional spending towards things during the budget cycle fell flat, and we didn't end up getting any more money in the budget for streets or sidewalks or anything. And the current administration, for example, made it very clear that it would never issue the bond or essentially never issue the bond that, that has become somewhat of the heart of this discussion. So I think it's a great conversation to have, and I think the key is, most counselors want to know, what are we going to spend that money on before they go and they raise the taxes on people and then tell them, yeah, I don't know what we're going to spend it on. I'll have to let you know. Right now, we're just collecting it to put it in, in a bucket, and we'll figure it out. The last thing I want to say is just, um, at twelve dollars and one cent, the increase to an average home from year over year is three hundred and thirty-one dollars. If you go to the twelve dollars and thirteen cents, the average, again, will go up to, uh, go up from, to, by four hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, in, in the annum. And then, so it's a four point one eight percent increase under the twelve oh one proposal and five point one percent. So just want to keep you in mind that, you know, five percent's a fairly big jump, and, you know, there's inflation all around, and that's maybe a discussion for another day as well. But just what you're potentially asking residents to, uh, to accommodate, again, not having budgeted this money and now coming in after the budget and saying we want more, not knowing what we can spend it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors on this motion to amend?
Motion to set the range to twelve thirteen, amended. Counselor Khan.
No.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Shan.
No.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
No.
Counselor Z.
No.
Yes, well, I know, I just. Okay, so Counsel Tanta. No. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
No.
Counselor Z.
No.
Counselor Kamal, yes. Counselor Devlin.
No.
Counselor Ragan.
Yes.
Three yeses. Motion fails.
All right. Uh, back to the underlying motion. Any word discussion on the underlying motion?
Roll call on twelve point oh one. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
No.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argon?
Yes.
One no, ten yes. Motion passes.
Next item, Chair.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion now to approve Order Number 303, Local Acceptance of MGL Chapter 60, Section 23B. Yes, Mr. President, the, the committee met on this. This is an acceptance of a state statute as specified there. And basically, what the state statute says is that without having accepted it, there is a default of $25 per certificate that can be collected for the issuance of a municipal lien. But when this specific chapter and verse of the mass general law is accepted, then it opens up an opportunity for a different fee schedule and adds multiple property types with differing fees ranging between $25 and $150, with the idea being that the fees that are specified here would be somewhat more in line with what the actual cost is to issue these. This order was discussed in committee and, and approved or recommended for approval by a vote of three to zero. And the sponsor may, may wish to add some more if there's, if I missed anything. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Roll call. Roll call on approving 303. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCollough?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin? Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
And Counsel Aragon?
Yes.
Next item, Chair.
Next one, I'd like to make the motion to approve on first reading, Ordinance Number 094, Municipal Fee Schedule.
Go ahead.
This was discussed in committee over a number of different meetings. Just to give you the broad strokes of it, Counselor Khan took up this initiative, I believe, as part of the, coming out of the ordinance review committee, with the idea being putting all the fees that the city charges across all the variety of different departments into one place. And initially, the initial submission of this was a two-part package. There was an order and an ordinance, and the order was designed to set the fees, and the ordinance was to clean up across, again, a wide variety of different sections in our code, the fees. After much discussion in committee, which I'll talk about in a moment, the output is that we now have Ordinance 094, which now is essentially proposed to be a new appendix in the municipal fee schedule. And so the proposed ordinance, which is amended and was amended in committee and presented to you as such in the packet, would do the cleanup throughout all of the different municipal areas of the code, and then create a unified fee schedule, which would, again, would be called Appendix B. The counselor, the sponsor who worked on this, Counselor Khan, went to great lengths to communicate with all the different departments, pulled together all of the different fees. This also involved a considerable amount of research into previous orders in conjunction with the clerk's office, because, as you know, many fees were previously set by order. And so pulling some of these old orders presented some challenges in finding them and all of those different things. The counselor also had to take care to manage, frankly, fee changes that were in flight, because we've done a few fee changes just in the last couple of months, and those are indeed reflected here. So the final product is an ordinance that, again, cleans up all and removes the references to specific fees throughout the code, and just puts in a reference there to a specific spot, which will be Appendix B. And that will show you, if you scroll through, all of the different fees. The other thing I want to mention that we talked about in committee is that the fees that are presented here are not changing. So they are fees that were set previously by order, or recently changed even by order as we did them, but that this was not an exercise where you needed to be looking through and saying, oh, did any of these fees increase? And I think that was to keep it more in line with its intent, which was to unify and bring things together. The discussion was far ranging in, in committee. We discussed the form of it, order versus ordinance. We discussed the, the fees. We also, we all learned, and the counselor, the sponsor, educated on this from her learning about, you know, some of these different boards and commissions that actually have state statutory authority to set fees and so forth. We even tried to, to work as a committee to encompass additional departments and so forth, like youth services, which set their own fees for programs. So in the end, the committee certainly enthusiastically supported it with a vote of three to zero, with the suggestion that this, this was a great final product and output, and will provide better transparency, easier to find information for residents as well as for department heads, and also create a more durable way forward to update this, because the ordinance can be reviewed. You know, the proposal here is to review it on an annual basis, and that could be an opportunity to make some changes, again, in an open and transparent way. And again, I hope I encompassed everything, but I will defer to the sponsor if there's anything else that I missed.
Chair, Counsel Khan?
Great. Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the Chair of Budget Finance. That was a great synopsis. I'm not going to add anymore, but I do have one scribbler's correction that was actually pointed out by the other council at large, local section 2G under licenses, permits, signs of business regulations. So just a correction on licenses for retail stores to operate, not to operation. So I think that was the, and I can send it to you.
Can you read that section again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's section 2G as in George. And then if you scroll down, it's in the subsection of miscellaneous license and application fees. And it says license for retail stores to, and it says operation, but it should be operate between 11 to 5:00. And I hope people appreciate it. It was a lot of work, and I learned a lot about things that I did not know we charged for. And I, I know this is going to be a dynamic document. I did send it out to all the department heads to review and got some good feedback from everyone, but that is one, one place that I am eager to see how, as we move forward, if the board has helped change the speed, the process of updating this. So I'm just throwing that out there. There's going to be some updates when they happen, hopefully not very often, but there are some under the council's purview and some under other boards and commissions purview. So that's the part that we're kind of balancing. But right now, this is the place residents can find all the fees on there. So, thank you.
Any other counselors? Roll call.
Roll call on approval of Ordinance 94 first reading. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCollough?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Aragon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is a motion to receive and file Order Number 277, Municipal Fee Schedule.
Go ahead.
So just now that the other ordinance was amended to encompass everything, the order is no longer needed, so it is suggested for receive and file.
Any other counselors on this? Roll call.
Roll call, receiving file 277. Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
McCollough?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Aragon?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, Mr. President, motion to approve Order 281, Authorization of Land Taking with Waiver of Appraisal and Damages with Planning and Development.
Go ahead.
I just want to note that this is also coming out of planning and development. So I'll deliver the committee report, and then if the, I don't know if the Chair of Planning wants to do the same, just to clear this off of their docket. But this had originally been slated for a vote, as well as 280, which we'll take up next in our, our previous meeting. But some late information from the city solicitor came in, asking us to hold it. The city solicitor had some concerns, specifically with the authorization of land taking and what would ultimately be recorded with the registry of deeds. So we held it back at the last meeting. We did, you know, I did as Chair, go back and forth with the city solicitor, and then the committee reviewed the final document jointly with planning and development. And in the end, really, there's no major substance changes. The amount is the same, the land is the same. This, really, the, the reliance upon the document, the, the so-called purchase and sale, which had previously been attached as an appendix, but is now incorporated by reference, has not changed. And that's where you'll find things about, you know, the size of the station and the flagpole and the things that we've discussed at length. So really, all of those things are encompassed in the new order. I just want to, again, make it very clear that the, the waiver of appraisal and damages, so I can say the name of the document correctly, even though it is no longer an appendix, it is on file with the city clerk, should be on file with the city clerk, and has been executed by the owners and the mayor, and that was done on October 22. So in the end, the Committee on Budget and Finance recommends you approve this by a vote of three to zero. And not to jump in, but the Planning and Development Committee also voted by a vote of two to zero to recommend approval of this. So I hope that that encompasses what you might need to know.
Chair Shan, would you want to add anything from our committee?
I was not present, so I will defer to you since.
I have anything to add. It was too, that's right. Other counselors?
Roll call for approval of 281. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCollough?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Aragon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Order Number 280, motion to approve, which is the Cutter Fire Station Loan Order. Mr. President, this comes to you in the exact same form as it was in the packet two weeks ago. It's a bond order to pay for design bidding, construction administration, OPM and clerk of the works to construct the fire station that we talked about back in August. Again, we held this with the other one, just to keep them together, but no changes have been made or recommended to this. Three, zero in committee.
The counselors?
Roll call on bond order 280. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCollough?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yeah.
Counsel Aragon?
Yes.
Okay, the list is dwindling. Mr. President, next up, I want to do Transfer 112, $250,000, $250,000 to compensated reserves, and Order 299, Together Collectively Prior Year Bill, City Solicitor. Transfer 112 is a, is a free cash appropriation of $250,000 to the compensated absences reserve fund. Bottom line is that this fund is utilized largely to pay out when a, an employee of the city from any department retires, and they may have had, you know, they may be able to cash in on unused sick time and other compensated absences that they have accumulated or accrued throughout their career. There is a small balance in the account right now of about $12,000, but based on anticipated retirements, that will not be sufficient to cover. So the $250,000 would go into there. If all of the anticipated retirements do occur as expected, then essentially that will largely deplete, maybe not to zero, but close to zero, that entire 250 plus the 12 that's in there now. We did a discussing committee, if it's common practice, as we do with other funds, to simply put money into this on a regular basis. But the finance director stated that, no, generally, you simply fund this with whatever you anticipate. And we also asked if, if at all anybody has ever quantified the total amount of compensated absence liability the city has across all of the current departments and employees, and that number is not available. While there is an estimate provided in our financial statements, it is something that they're working on with the auditor. So that's the $250,000, and why and where. The other one is transfer, the other one, pardon me, is, yeah, Order Number 299. As you know, when bills come in after the close of the fiscal year, city council's approval is required. This is a KP law bill from May that somehow trickled in after the end of the fiscal year, $13,000. So again, ask for you to approve both of these collectively. Both of them were recommended for approval, three, zero in committee.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
We've just transferred 112 and Order 299. Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
McCollough?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Aragon?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, last, last item, and thank you for your patience, is Communication 360, which is a memo confirmation on the water main replacement from Phillips Drive with a motion to receive and file.
Go ahead.
The committee did meet on this. We didn't really spend a lot of time discussing the content of the memo, because it was fairly self-explanatory, with the major conclusion being that the water main does need to be and will need, will be replaced on Phillips Drive. As you know, that was a portion of our discussion as part of the bond order. So that part was not done, not discussed heavily. Rather, we used an opportunity to provide the committee and some residents an update as to where this project is, and now we'll offer you the same, so you're caught up as well. The city engineering department reports that basically the, the design is all but done. They're waiting on BSC, which, as you recall, is the consultant who's assisting with this design to return back that information to the city on or before about December 3. So let's call it early December, at which point it will kick off a review process by the city engineering department. Next steps from there will be to file an NOI with CONCOM sometime in, in mid-December, before the holidays, to start requesting hearings in January. They expect to have roughly two hearings, and once CONCOM gets any final comments, those would be incorporated into any bid documents. Speaking of bids, the bids are anticipated to go out in March. That's the current projection based on the update that we were provided. In the interim, the, between now and then, in addition to reviewing the documents, preparing and submitting to CONCOM, there will need to be easements that are executed. And so it's very high likelihood the council will see those, not in December, I think, but probably sometime in the new year and the new session. So giving you a heads up that those may be coming. And then, basically, the estimate is that if it goes out in March for a bid, that maybe the project would start somehow, sometime, pardon me, in or about May, and so on or about May, I should say, pardon me. So still shooting for that spring kind of timeline. That's the information that we received. Neighbors hopefully can take some comfort in that information and update. But we do know that neighbors and the ward council are very intent and interested in seeing additional updates. So the committee did request by discussion and through the Chair, an update from the engineering department sometime next month, if they just kind of let us know if these things are continuing on process. And with that, the, the committee and the ward council were comfortable receiving and filing it. And if any update is provided next month, hopefully there will be, I'll be happy to forward it to committee members, but of course, also to the council as a whole if you are interested. So receive and file, three, zero is the recommendation.
Counselors on this matter? Seeing none, roll call.
Receiving file Communication 360. Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
McCollough?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Aragon?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. President, in terms of items. I just want to remind you that on Thursday, we have a committee meeting, a standing committee meeting, and 57 low will be the topic. That is available to everybody, as it is committee of the whole, if you are so interested, and if you need anything from me ahead of that. And then we added one final budget meeting on December 7, where we will take up the remaining items, the moral foundation, the fire contract and so forth. So if there's any interest in that as well. Thank you again for your patience. That concludes Budget and Finance.
Chair, Chair Khan, Education?
Great. Thank you, Council President. We had on November 16, a joint meeting with the school committee and the city council, and that was kind of like our, our November meeting. I am planning on one more before the December 13, so we, we know what to do with the items in committee. We have a few things that we could either, my intention is we'll probably may continue some of them, the MSBA grant application, but the plan is probably to meet Monday, December 6, and I'm going to email my committee members, too, just trying to make sure what day works. We do have Budget and Finance on Tuesday. We were trying to really not meet before the school committee meeting, but that's been a challenge for me in terms of finding that, a viable date outside that date. So something to think about as we do education for the next year. But right now, it's looking like December 6, and it's really to go through the last few items on, kind of on our plan. Thank you.
General Government, we just had two communications and reminders, but I don't expect us to have any more meetings this year. So those would die. Weston Permits, Chair Devlin?
Nothing? Nothing to report.
Thank you. Chair Khan, Neighborhood and City Service?
No items to report. We will be scheduling meeting when we get our calendars together, sometime next week.
Thank you. Chair Shan?
Motion to approve Ordinance 92, zoning amendment to encourage outdoor recreational activities. Motion to approve ordinance ninety-two, zoning amendment to encourage outdoor recreational activities.
Go ahead.
All right, here goes. So the tennis court, the tennis club actually came to the council. Award five councillor and was requesting an opportunity to utilize their space in a more efficient way, given the fact that we were all looking for places to. Do outdoor recreation, specifically swimming outdoors in this COVID environment. So what they needed was a zoning change to what their current arz zoning allows. So what you see in this amendment is a change to our use table. You'll look at use three oh five and four oh six, outdoor health and recreation facilities. We've just gotten rid of country club. And we have made it a special permit in the R two district. We went through a few rounds on this, and the R two district's really the only area of the community that has this kind of space. You'll also note that we took out the industrial I one, I one B and I two as a special permit and made it a no permit. This is based on input from staff regarding the lack of. The business park wanting to have this use there, so we did accommodate that change. You will note that there is a subnote J, the Planning Board will be the special permit granting authority for these two uses. As you continue on, you look at the definitions we have, we use three oh five and four oh six. The outdoor health and recreation facility, we have the addition of the structure, facilities being enclosed for portions of the year by retractable or mobile enclosed system. This was something that we reviewed with the zoning administrator, who was in agreement that this would be appropriate language for that. As the joint hearing progressed, we discussed the need to have a building as the wording there. Because if you, if you were to have a pool, needed to have the additional structure around it that would also include the deck, any kind of. Locker room area, so that seemed like the appropriate verbiage there. If we continue into the section six A, the general requirements, the table of dimensional requirements, we did do a few rounds here, so you will note in. Number three oh five, the lot area being very specific, hundred and ninety-six thousand twenty square feet is actually four point five acres. So if you take a look at that, we're just keeping the nineteen oh twenty in there since we keep square footage as the delineating unit number. You also note that we did increase the lot coverage to thirty percent there. That thirty percent was based off the applicant doing some numbers on their own, based on nine thousand square foot swimming pool. With the addition of a possible locker room recreational area around it. And they were thinking, since this is sort of a, a generic plan, they were thinking that's around twenty-five percent lot coverage right now, which is why we went up to thirty percent. And planning board agreed that was probably the right number to use. So we had agreement there. I think the biggest discussion we had was parking. Parking is always the most fun discussion. So right now, the tennis club has around sixty-two thousand square feet and their parking requirement is based on that gross square footage. So they have eighty-two spaces at this time. If you look at any time the tennis club is used, they never use that much parking. So what we did was look at other areas of the country, how they delineate parking. And what we came to was the one for one thousand square foot of court area. We discussed tennis courts, basketball courts, pickleball courts. And per the zoning administrator, since we wanted to try and keep this somewhat vague, this number that we came to actually. Is in alignment with what the Unified Land Development Code has and the Unified, another Unified Development Code has, so. That also worked with the square footage of the swimming pool. That also is similar to other communities in the state and across the country, the one for three thousand, three hundred square footed. Swimming surface area. So this all sort of came out to, if you use the square footage of what they think they would need for the pool. And the current square footage for all their courts, there will be around needing around seventy-two spaces, and right now they have eighty-two spaces already. So we kind of got, thought we were in the ballpark, and the main reason we wanted to get this parking rights is because that area of the community does not have off-street parking. So we're trying to avoid any issues going down the road. So with that. We approve this two to nothing in the planning board meeting. And I will refer to the Ward five councillor, who is the at respond for council here.
Thank you, Chair. Council McCauley, do you want to add anything? Other, other councilors, questions or debates? No, no, Council Z, sorry, too fast. Go ahead.
I only, thank you. My question is about, were, were there any discussions about unintended consequences by allowing this in, in R two? Even if only by special permit as opposed to rezoning the specific parcel that's in question to be a commercial zone? Or my misunderstanding how that, you know, what, I just concerns me to allow a commercial use even by special permit in R two, since basically. A lot of the city is now R two as we know. Thank you.
So we, so we did have that discussion, and if you look at all the R two areas in the city, there's just no space. And if we were to do a special zone just for the tennis court, that would be really more like spot zoning, so we didn't want to change that. And I'll refer to.
I'll speak on that just for point of information. Yes, I, I pressed on that. I have a lot of R two in Ward, Ward two. And that's where the four point five acres comes in and special permit. And we had staff show us exactly how many parcels currently exist at that size. They're very few and they're all on low street.
Thank you.
Council Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President, if I may, through the chair. The question that I have is, so you addressed this in particular because of the tennis court asking your questions. And then you went over and you changed the permitting or the allowable uses in the industrial areas. I find that a little bit odd. I mean, we haven't had anybody come in and ask for, well, at the time, a country club. But the outdoor health and recreation or indoor health in the, in the industrial area, I mean, a lot of that space is just not used. And I, and I'm curious as to why sort of ahead of the game, we're saying no. I mean, I understand that there's a lot of. Desire by the business part to keep it as it is, but also as we know, there's an opportunity for other things and, you know, to enhance the city. So I'm just wondering how it was you went into this specifically for the tennis court and then kind of moved on over and amended those other pieces.
Chair Shan.
Sure, so this was a topic of conversation at the joint hearing, and it really did come down to the fact that in the business park, without there being any sidewalks. The business community is very concerned about people walking around that area, which is why the staff actually recommended that we take this out and has an option for. That area of the community.
Thank you.
Other councilors? I think we're ready for roll call.
Roll call approval first reading, ordinance ninety-two. Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Aragon.
Yes, thank you. Anything else?
Yes, the motion to allow waiving the rules so we could bring the conservation restriction, number three zero four, out for committee.
Yes, I got that. I'll second that. All right.
Sure, so I did get word over the holidays that the City Council is the first domino that needs to fall so that. They can have this get to the state for official approval, and it does seem like the applicant is trying to get somebody into a home in this area, the Evergreen Commons area. So I thought, if nothing else, we could at least get the conservation restriction done this week. We still have four other. Ordinances to deal with, but we're solely focused on the conservation restriction aspect of the Evergreen Commons, so.
And we did have a hearing on.
And yes, we did meet before tonight's council meeting with both the applicant and with the support from staff this time, so.
Questions or, or debate from other councilors, the motion to waive the rules for the House to bring it out?
Roll call on waiving the rules for order three oh four. Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Yes, Council Devlin.
Yes.
Yes.
It is ours.
Okay.
The motion to approve order three oh four.
Go ahead.
All right, so this is the conservation restriction that we have the Evergreen Commons area. It is a, a conservation restriction that has been in the works for quite some time. You will note that throughout the. The restriction, we have reference to Evergreen Commons. What folks need to know is that when this associated, when the planning board first made their decision. The declaration of restriction was already set in place. So that means that basically the homeowners association already knew that there was going to be a conservation restriction set on their homes, so. When you see the, there was a question made by the Ward one councillor regarding Evergreen Commons being. No longer in existence and it's going to an HOA, that means after the conservation restriction is in place, homeowners association will be fully engaged. It will no longer be Evergreen Commons. So that restriction, declaration restriction was already put in place to start with. So what you also should know is the Conservation Commission has already signed up on this, the state has already signed up on this. So now, now it's just a matter of the City Council doing their due diligence to approve the conservation restriction. So the areas that are in question, and I will show the lovely map that we got today. If you didn't see it, what we're talking about are three specific parcels. It's the green buffer area. Around the area next to Boyd Drive, we've got the central. Bar in the center, and they have this full open space area to the right-hand side. We are not discussing any of the easements this time around. I think folks might remember that we had concerns about ADA accessibility. That is still being reviewed with the building inspector. He is actually working with the state right now to make sure that that is accommodated correctly. But tonight we are truly only discussing the conservation restriction. Let's see, what else do we have? Oh, another item that should be noted is the homeowners association actually does have by a special order of condition from the planning department. They have sixteen thousand five hundred dollars put away right now to support making sure that the numerous things. One is cutting the grass, various items requiring them to make sure that they each year have their land. Their landscapers come in to show what their plan is for the year, since this is over our water. Water well.
Well, thank you.
Water well. So yes, that is a comment that was actually made, is sixteen thousand five hundred enough? That was the original permit requirement by the planning board. There really isn't an opportunity to go back and change that. But we did say that in committee tonight that we would go back and move the other four items we have out the next time around. To see if there's other opportunities to make it such that the homeowners association will keep that fine. So with all that being said, we did meet tonight, we met and agreed three to zero to approve this conservation restriction. Any other questions? And I do believe Andy Ford is actually still online if there are further questions.
Questions from councilors? Let's see here. Go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to express my concern, I guess, during committee. Before the first committee meeting in this afternoon, I sent in some questions about, basically. I think the obvious thing is none of us want to end up having another situation like a cherry hill where developments get done and it takes years for the. Ill effects to show up, and then there's nobody left basically to deal with the challenges and essentially it becomes the residents, the taxpayers, and then upholding the bags, so. My concern with this in particular were things like, you know, Evergreens Commons LLC will no longer exist, presumably the chair addressed that, and, and. Then there are some other questions, like there's a, in section B, starting on page four, there is a litany of different maintenance items that need to be. Completed and just ensuring that those will be completed and that the HOA will do them and that they will not ultimately fall to the city. I recommended, for example, maybe a bond should, should be collected here for surety against this, similar to what was described with the sixteen thousand five hundred, which. I think also needs some discussion because I'm not, I'm not sure how, if that's enough relative to it. But my bigger concern is I don't understand how we are supposed to interact with planning board decisions because clearly, and to be fair, the, these are long. These happen over a long period of time. There are deals made during the permitting process and then written into decision. But then we end up with these land transactions to do something with them, accept them or not accept them. So I don't know if there's some way to, to do better in this and to, to be a part of any sort of land transactions that would be part of a permitting approval before. The approval is granted. That's not something I've ever seen in my six years where the, the planning board would come and say, look, we're going to. Issue this permit on these contingencies, and by the way, you will have to accept this CR and this easement and grant this and do this. So that's just me airing out my concerns. In the other four items related to this, I also sent in questions and will be very intent on making sure, particularly around stormwater. As much as we can get assurances from our, our own city solicitor and from other staff that we're good and that these are written properly, so. I'll be supporting this, but I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Thank you, Council. Chair Shan.
I will address those, and I did take your concerns, the sixteen thousand five hundred did sound low, and I think you probably heard the attorney. Or the applicant basically saying, you know, this is probably something to your point that should have been addressed years ago in the permitting process. But since we've already gotten down the line, we really did take that comment you made to heart, and we are going to look at that when we start looking at the other four easements for the next council. I mean, the next planning development committee. So we did take that comments to heart.
Other councilors? Roll call.
Google Law, order three oh four. Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Yes, Council Devlin.
Yes.
Aragon.
Yes, thank you. Was there anything else?
No, thank you, Council.
Thank you. Public safety, Chair Khan.
Yes, excuse me, motion to approve our ordinance ninety-six as amended, which is a clarification of parking orders.
You got a second, Council Vogel, go ahead.
Great, thank you. This is an ordinance put together, which takes all of our parking orders that we've written over many years and puts them in one place. It codifies them, it covers sections, storm emergencies, parking restricted in certain streets, bus stops, pickup and drop-off areas. Taxi cab stands, parking, limited two hours, one hour, thirty minutes, fifteen minutes. Handicap parking, residential parking. Specific street schedules and stopping and standing, all of those different ones that have been placed. What you see here with the latest version, with the link from the clerk that came in later today, is an updated version of this that was amended on eleven twenty-three. It includes all of the up-to-date changes that were made, for example, added Union Street, and that was passed tonight, was included as well. So you'll see a lot of edits, you'll see a lot of changes, you'll see some removals, all of those types of things. Throughout the, throughout the effort, so with that, I'll yield to see if the sponsor would like to add anything, but.
Thank you, Chair. Council Khan.
Great, thank you, Council President. Yes, I want to thank the Ward one councillor. If you guys remember our last meeting, we did send it back to committee to add some items that. Was identified. I do have a correction, so if I may, so quick jump when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so it's under section thirteen dash one sixty-eight, the category partly restricted on certain streets. That is page three of that. And it's under Harrison Street. So the first part of Harrison Street, it's actually, the second sentence was double stricken out. It actually needs to stay there, however, in that last line, instead of saying from a point one hundred feet west of Water Street to Water Street. It's a hundred feet south. Do you have that part, Jones?
I do.
Okay, so that's a motion to amend.
Yes, so.
Okay, discussion on.
For the record, I'm, I'm going to recuse, sorry, I got feedback. I'm going to recuse on this, this matter because it's, it's near my home, so I don't, I can't, don't want to speak to it. Thank you.
You're out. Second. Anyone else on the motion to amend on Harrison?
And that was moved by Counselor Khan, seconded by McCauley. Thank you. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yep.
Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z, are you recused?
No.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin. Counselor Devlin?
He's absent.
Okay, Counselor Argon.
Yes, yeah, Counselor Devlin's not with.
Okay, one, one absent, one recused.
All right.
Motion Texas.
So as amended, were there any other amendments?
No.
So as amended, why don't, any discussion? Call call.
Approval as amended, ordinance 96. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z. Are you in?
He's out.
You're recused still. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin is absent. Counselor Argon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairman, how are you doing?
Nothing further.
Counselor. Thank you. Chair Contra, Public Utilities.
Nothing.
Chair Vogel.
Nothing tonight.
Good to be aware. Motion to amend.
Hope it's in order. I just wanted to remind counsel some, actually, I will send an email reminding you that, even if you don't know yet, we were planning a council vote for 7:15 to 7:13. And it would be greatly appreciated if you all attend to have a council vote with missing persons. Requires us to do Photoshop, and you would not want us to do that. Right. Thank you.
It's a good point. It's the last meeting of the year. I know we had a couple of counselors who were sick, so we didn't want them here. And they've gotten us sick. Everyone's in with no. Second, Counsel Peter.
I have.
On the motion to adjourn, Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yep.
Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z. Justice McConnell. Counselor Devlin is absent. Counsel Argon.
Yes, thank you very much.
Your adjournment.